All right, Mr. Kennedy is going to be first on our list for the Clickitack County Morning Workshop, Legislative Update by Pots and Associates. Mr. Kennedy, are you on there?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, perfect. What great news do you have for us out of the legislature this week?
Why do you keep asking me that?
I know, right?
Oh, well, no, I appreciate your guys' time. This is, this is great. Coming out of the legislature this week, it's interesting. What we've got is an interesting situation. We've kind of talked about this previously. I'll bring it up quickly. With respect to about forty percent plus of legislature, they've never been in person. The legislative aides have never been in person. And so there's a lot of kind of fun stuff going on where two senators from the same party or two representatives from the same party will introduce a bill to address a topic that's the same topic in different bills, and we have to go to them sometimes and say, hey, you know, your seatmate introduced a bill that does a lot of the same thing. Have you guys talked? And kind of the light bulb goes on like, oh, no, we haven't. Actually, thank you for letting me know. And so it's kind of an educational year, and it does provide some opportunity to get some good positive interaction with the legislators, which we really enjoy. There's a, interesting because they have the offices that the legislators are in. The main doors are closed, so there's not a lot of traffic going by and seeing the legislative aides. So access is a little bit more restricted. We get by. It's not a problem. But you can tell these legislative aides, because they're kind of locked behind the doors and don't get all the people coming through, they're very bored, and they're either going to die of boredom or they're going to kill each other soon. Because if you don't like your seatmate there, you're in trouble. It's all you see all day. So they're very interested in talking. Now that, so there's a couple of bills that I wanted to bring to your guys' attention, some to ease your mind, some just to keep you aware of what's going on. One of them that deals with jail funding is 5440. And I know, I'm sure your public defender is probably pretty concerned about it. Basically, this is a governor's office DSHS ASK bill. And what it talks about is, basically, they want to do evaluations in the jail on true blood crimes for mental health. And so there's so much with this bill. I'll hit the couple of really good highlight points for you guys. Number one, it's the state trying to push responsibility both for behavioral health, both with actually doing the service, offering the DSHS service, and paying for it down to the county level. There's really no room for this, actually in the jails. I mean, you have to have a specific area for it. They've said, okay, well, you can do it, you know, at next to the jail. Okay, then we have transport costs. But long story short, there's a couple of constitutionality questions with this. Number one is going to be the constitutionality of the unfunded mandate. They may try and push this down onto your criminal justice levies. Okay, so then there'd be a way for you to raise money, but there's still no money in this bill at all for you guys. You have to ask for it. Number two, there's actually a constitutionality question about providing the service in your jails. And right now, nobody really knows. The bill hasn't got a hearing. The governor's office is pushing on it pretty hard. But even the prime sponsors haven't really stepped up to try and push this into committee. So I know it's a concern for people. I just kind of wanted to bring that to your attention, that it's out there. We're not entirely sure what it's going to do, but we're watching. The other one that's going to be of some interest is 1215, and that's your riparian border kind of restoration bill. The questions around this one, if you're participating in voluntary stewardship, if you've kind of got things figured out, you know, with salmon recovery or anything, the question with this bill, it kind of supersedes some of these other programs. They're trying to figure out how to make it work with everything. The agricultural community has some big issues with this bill, specifically with respect to the lack of what they would call, you know, sound or good science included in the bill. And that comes back to any work that you may have done under the voluntary stewardship program. You know, for example, if you've got a salmon-bearing river or creek or whatever, and you've done some VSP work, you probably know where the shade needs to be, where, you know, what you need to do to that particular water flow. This bill could come in and just mandate that you do something to the entire flow. Well, that's ridiculous. You've already done the work. So that's some of the questions. Representative Chapman is extremely open to suggestions. He wants county feedback. So certainly, please do give any feedback that you might have. They will listen. So you can either do that through us or contact Representative Chapman directly. Either way, whatever you guys would like, please just let us know. Some of the other stuff that we're seeing that is of concern, I think, I will make you aware of it, and then you guys can decide if it is of concern to you. What's going on is there's some bills out there dealing with climate change, climate action, the climate crisis. Now, whether you believe that there is a climate crisis or not, or climate change or not, it really doesn't matter for this scope that I'm going to talk about. What the legislature is doing is in the intent section of these bills, and to be clear, this doesn't hit code, doesn't actually hit the RCW, but it is in the intent section, so it will have an impact on how the WAC codes are put together for that particular bill. So in the regulatory implementation, what they're saying is, the statements go, the Washington State Legislature finds that because of the climate crisis, this thing is happening, therefore, we are going to take this following action. And the issue with this declarative statement, because the climate crisis or because of climate change, they're basically saying this thing is true and not referencing any specific scientific studies or guidelines or anything that might help guide the regulatory process. Which means when ecology, DNR, agriculture goes to implement some rules around any of these regulations, one of the things they're talking about, for example, is water system planning. Because of the climate crisis, the legislature finds that counties and local jurisdictions, whatever, need to plan their water systems better. And here's how we want you to plan water systems. Well, what, because ecology or DNR or whatever is going to be looking at that through the climate lens with no guidance, it's really open to interpretation. I've talked with, quite frankly, Republican leadership, because these are B-side bills. And if there's going to be any change, it's going to come from amendments from the Republicans. And what they're saying is that they're talking with the sponsors, and they said they think they've got some good inroads here to kind of address these issues. But I wanted to make you aware of it. While, like I said, it doesn't hit code this year, this language could pop up in future sessions, actually in a bill, without the scientific backing. And it's not that I'm saying it does or doesn't exist. What I'm saying is if they're going to put this in, they really need to include some studies for us to reference. So at the local level, we have at least some, some boundaries on what might be put on us in the future by an agency. So that's kind of the overarching kind of thought there. The other one that a lot of the rural areas seem to have a good interest in is the firearms legislation. So I'll touch on that real quick for you guys and your constituents. With respect to the firearms bills, we've got bills on both sides, some that, you know, are second amendment bills and want to go to full, you know, open concealed carry, and then the other side to where they want to do more regulation, whatever, however far that goes. Right now, the sheriffs have come out in their association across the state opposed to the governor's ASK firearm bills. Kind of sent a pretty good message from law enforcement. So what's going on is these bills are kind of like a hot potato. Nobody wants to touch them. They're out there. Nobody's really working on them. Nobody's really pushing them, except for maybe the governor's office, because they don't care what the sheriffs think right now. But there is a lot of opposition to some of the more restrictive and, I mean, you can read the sheriff's statement, and they're not real happy with the governor right now. So for the time being, what we're looking at is, kind of being told to sit back and relax, and we will see what flushes out here with the, like, charged political environment, because these legislators are also having conversations with respect to, and this came up at the LSC Roundtable on Wednesday. They're looking at some of these law enforcement, police reform bills and gun bills that they put through in the last couple of years, and they're going, we spent a whole bunch of money, and crime is getting worse. Now, I'm not saying that they're actually going in and identifying the root cause of anything, but what they are doing is stepping back and going, well, what we've been trying isn't working. So maybe we just stop doing what we've been trying, because it doesn't work. And in fact, that would mean, don't do anything, which would be good for us. Anytime the legislature on almost any issue does nothing, it's a good, good thing for us. And so with respect to that, we just are being advised to sit back and watch. And if we have comments, please contact the sponsors. Just let them know your comments, but quietly. So that's my update for the moment. Do you guys have any questions, comments, clarifications, observations? Anything you'd like to know?
Senate Bill 5380 concerning clean energy siding. Are you hearing if that's going to likely move or not? Or should we spend any time on that?
You know, it sounds like they want it to move. You know, and, and this came up at WASAC, and all the counties are kind of looking at it. I think Adams County is probably the most opposed to this bill with the clean energy siding. The, the issue becomes the fact that you could be overridden on a siding issue in the county. So I think we watch it. Right now, the counties are watching very closely, and so I don't know if it's going to move, but there is a lot of push behind it to encourage clean energy. And, yeah, a couple of our counties have said, you know, this almost sounds like a reaction to, you know, something that we didn't allow to happen. So, I mean, you know, it does cut right to the core of your authority. So we do need to watch it, but I don't know if it's going to move. And it will not move in the form that it's in. How about that? Or they might pass it out of the committee, but they will amend it from where it's at.
Next question. On the Senate Bill 5357, the limitations on attached accessory dwelling units. I know there's multiple ADU ordinances, or not ordinances, but legislation. Are you thinking any of that's going to move?
You know, I think what they've done on this one is realized that there's quite a few. This is one of those ones where people didn't talk with the different bills that they've introduced. And so right now, something will move, at least out of committee. I have no idea which one it's going to be, because this is specifically one of the ones where he said, hey, did you talk to so-and-so over there? You know, you guys are looking at the same thing. So this is kind of a standby. Something will move. We don't have any idea which one or what it will look like. But we are, we're having those conversations. We are at the table. The counties are at the table on this conversation, for sure. Those were my questions so far.
Do you have any questions? I don't have any further questions for you. It's still early, so I want to get myself too worked up this early in the session until I see what actually gets moving out of committee.
You know, and I think that's a really, really good position to take right now. You know, I mean, some of this stuff could be, could be kind of nasty for us, but there's a lot of little poison pills floating around out there in amendments and sidebar conversations. So I think that's a smart approach. You know, and we're definitely, you know, as usual, we work really closely with WASAC and keep apprised of, of the work there. In fact, I called Juliana to make sure I didn't step in it on 5440, because if they'd made any progress that we hadn't heard about. And quite honestly, there's not been any progress on that bill.
I think it's, it's kind of the same thing with the green energy legislation. I mean, I can see that piece being tweaked in a good way or tweaked in a bad way. So until we know where they're going to tweak, I don't really want to take a stand too hard on something.
Yeah, and I think WASAC is being really, really smart at going, you know, neutral with concerns on bills. And, you know, or just kind of say, hey, we could be good, but we don't really know where it's going to go. So we'll stand back. That's a really good position at the moment.
Well, and I think everything we're going to want to tweak to, you know, this little line here is bad. And if you, you know, come out in support, then what benefit do you really have to convince them to tweak it? Same deal. If you're coming out opposed to it, why would they care to try to win your vote by tweaking a line? So I think neutral on a lot of things right now is a good call.
Yeah, you know, and at the WASAC level, so all of county, at the association level, that's a really good, you know, comment for them. And it is even more pertinent for individual counties that aren't maybe Pierce, Noomish, and King. That, you know, we don't have a lot of leverage out there. You know, they, they look at us and they go, with the county, they don't, they don't look at the, your constituency. They look at you three. And they say, well, there's only three people we have to answer to at the county level. And we go, well, no, there's, you know, fifty-seven thousand people in this county, or forty thousand, or whatever that you need to answer to. So, you know, that, that becomes less impactful. So if we stay neutral with concerns, we have a much better voice than we do with a no.
Right. Well, thank you, sir. If you don't have anything else for us, we don't have anything else for you. We'll let you go away early today.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you at all. And if you guys need any, anything, you know, during the week or want to have any meetings, if you're coming over for the steering committee or just questions, please call, email, text, anytime. If you would like to get in to see legislators when you're in Olympia, the sooner you let us know, the better, just because of the fact that the offices are locked. If we can get you an appointment set up, it's just way faster.
Right. Yeah, I'm sure we'll wear you out later in the session, but for now, you're.
I look forward to it.
Alrighty. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. You guys have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, you guys are here early. Do you start early? Holy crap, they do start early. We don't even get to talk legislation stuff.
We can wait.
I will do it later. Would my seatmates like to schedule fifteen minutes to talk legislation every week, or do we care?
I'd be happy to.
To literally put it on the agenda? What part of the agenda would you like it on?
Morning after his, when he gives us the update, I would think.
So after Public Works? Is that what you're saying?
We'll go back the way it was, because that's, we've always done that, but you, the board was not discussing anything, and I didn't want to have any blank spaces. So I was glad to move it back.
Well, I'm just thinking, that's fine. I mean, just thinking, if we do it every week, we won't have pots every week. But that would mean we would start at nine forty-five and just start with legislative-type updates. Right. Moving on, we will move into department update. Public Works Director, Intern Director and County Engineer. Go ahead.
Okay, we have a few things on your agenda today. Most of them deal with projects. Local agency update for prospectus, which allows us to do the, start doing the projects. We have four of those, five of those. We have five of those on. They're all, that's what all of it is. Ones for the bridge, ones for the edge line, ones for the guardrail and slope flattening, and there's two for each one. So that's why there's so many of those. I can get into more. I'll let Seth discuss more about what those are. That's just federal paperwork we've kind of talked about in the past. We have two pay estimates. Pay estimate number three and final to all seasons in the amount of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and ten-two cents, which contains retainage. This is for the Pioneer Center 2021 project. And the second pay estimate's also for all seasons. This is pay estimate number two and final. This is for the amount of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty. And this is for the Pioneer Center HVAC replacement for 2022. Reason, like I said, there's the two of them is because we could not get the materials in 2021 when we originally bid the project. The contractor could not acquire the HVAC systems. Things have gotten better on that front. We were able to get them, and now both of those projects are done. We have one scheduled for this year. I'll let Seth go ahead with the construction and the design report.
So on the construction side, the construction group has started their annual visual pavement condition ratings. They're going to be doing the west side of the county this year. So if anybody hears about a vehicle traveling slowly, holding up traffic, that's what they're doing. They're doing their visual ratings.
See, that merth's me.
On the design side, yeah, the agenda items today will bring two of the other federal projects up to that next step of the final review to approve to go to add. And the one prospectus also for Rock Creek Bridge, get that one into WashDOT's review, get us approval to send those out to add. And designers are also continuing their work on CIPA and other permitting documents for upcoming construction this year and the maintenance projects that we're helping out with as well. I think that covers what both groups are doing.
Okay. Back to the maintenance. The crews on the east side are brushing, grading and spot graveling. More further east, but we're, it has started to dry up a little bit, firm up a little bit, so we can get into those areas now on the east side. The west side, we're not as quite as fortunate. So we're brushing around the towns, Trout Lake, Husam and Glenwood. We're doing some ditching along Centerville Highway and Old Highway Eight. And we have a few holes to patch as they come up. Upcoming facilities projects, this building, we're still working through the punch list items. We still have not got a final estimate for the HVAC. Fairgrounds waterline project, DHAP, we're going to start work March first, unless we get bad weather. But right now, we're looking around March first to start that waterline project. We need to shoehorn that in before we start getting events in April and May. Juvenile, as we talked about, that courthouse, courthouse break room and conference room. Our carpenters have been working in there. The painting is complete. They'll do the ceiling installation this week. Again, we're still on schedule to, to open that third, second to third week of February. It'll be open to the employees. SAD is passed. Contracts are back, so they'll be back to you guys next week. And the pre-con has been scheduled for February ninth. Not that we'll start the work, but we want to get them going, because they have to order the tower. And they won't do that until the contract is signed. Some follow-up stuff, I have a tour scheduled with the Dallasport Community Council for the treatment plant on February eighth at eleven o'clock, in case anybody else wants to attend. They asked for it when we, when we went down there last year in the meeting. And so we've scheduled it. Bingeon, we met with the city administrator last week, and we've scheduled there, because they have that. We got, we helped assist, get them a grant, the TIB dollars. We're going to perform the work. We're going to start crack ceiling in May there, and then we'll pave Willow Street for them. Probably June. That's all paid for by TIB grant funding. I gave you, I wanted to give you a quick quarry update, because you're going to see some quarry stuff. That's what these, that's what these, these aerials are. One's west side. Of course, the county's long and skinny. I can't get them all in. In case anybody ever asks you, we have seven quarry sites. When I first got here, we had over twenty. Quarries are very expensive to own. We had them everywhere. We've closed out, we're in the process, we got approval from DNR to terminate our lead, our permit, and it has been terminated on the last of the quarries. So we've closed out about fifteen or sixteen of them throughout the year. Probably around fifteen. McBride was the last one. McBride-Hale. We'll be bringing forth the agreements, the termination agreements for you guys to execute, since the previous board executed the lease agreements. You guys will need to execute the termination agreements. We have no further use for the rock. To be honest with you, we haven't crushed in McBride's. We did one crushing in nineteen ninety-eight, long before I got here. Rock quality was not that good. And so it took us that long to actually find a place to use the rock. And then to, then strategically, when we had a cat in the area, close the quarry down. So we've done that, and Hale's been done a few years, but that's just a paperwork thing. So we'll be bringing those forward in the next couple of weeks when we get everybody on board.
Do you crush rock in these quarries as needed? Or do you run a crusher and then just hop from quarry to quarry to give yourself a stockpile every five years and then don't bring in a crusher again for five years, kind of thing? How does that work?
You hit it right on the head. Yes, it is, it is.
Efficient.
Yes. We do it every, every approximately five years is the goal. And we crush approximately every, and we do a quarry crush in most of the quarries. Actually, we don't, we don't mine much in Trout Lake or in Ingram, which is on the far east side. We don't crush in those quarries. But Fisher Hill, Esteb, Badger, Mattson, we do crush in those. So yes, we're getting ready to do another crush.
Is it, is it kind of the same quality of rock? So you're using the rock from a specific quarry around that quarry? Or is there different types of rock that you'll literally haul from one quarry to the other side of the county, because it's a different type of rock?
Typically, we tried, that's why we got rid of a lot of the quarries, was because they didn't, that was exactly what you just said. Some of them didn't have all the, all the products. You couldn't make all the products. So it wasn't viable to keep the quarries open. So as far as that, I mean, they have different quality rock, but like, we have one on the far east that we can crush sand out of and chip rock. All of them could do maintenance rock, which is base course, top course, ballast. But the other ones can do, and then two of them cannot do those products. That's Esteb. Esteb's really the only one. So we have the rest of them. We can crush those products in. We also own, we own three of the seven quarries outright. We do, we own the property, so we do not pay a lease fee or anything else. And that's Trout Lake we own. We also own Badger and Mattson. The other ones are leased. But they're good quality rock, very good quality rock. We like to say we have the best rock in the county. I think we do. So just to kind of give you a synopsis, in case anybody asks, you know, so you guys are aware where the quarries are and what we do. So we will be bringing one forward this year. A big crushing that we'll do, because we started to run our rock sources down. But just to kind of give you a ballpark, we had, if we buy snow sand from Bishop's, it's right around twenty dollars a ton. We still have, we still have snow stands sitting in Bingeon quarry that cost us six dollars a ton. So it's considerably different. And that's after paying royalties and everything else. That's finished product. So it's much cheaper to have our own sources. But we've talked about that in the past. I think that's it, unless you've got something.
Questions? I will throw out the treatment plant tour, although I would love to do it. I will be in DC for that one, so I will be missing that. Don't know if my seatmates have plans.
I'll be in Olympia.
I'd love to go.
Okay. I could send you.
Oh, that worked.
Yes, it's, I'll send you notice too, but it's at eleven o'clock on the eighth. I got, I had, took a while to schedule it. We had, because I have to get the operator and everybody, because they have, they have a whole list of questions. And I can forward you that too, so you're aware of what's, what's going to be brought up.
Thank you.
Sure. Glad, I'm glad one of us can make that. Next question, transportation potential state appropriations. It is the transportation year, transportation budget year. And I'm hearing rumors that there might be availability, if you have anything that might be even considered close to shovel-ready to uh, availability, if you have anything that might be even considered close to shovel ready to um, receive state appropriation to do a project. It's just, here's some free money for a project. Do you have anything or could you come up with anything or can you think of anything? That might fit that bill, or a million, mil and a half.
Uh, if we could have till next week, we could, we'll bring you back some stuff, I think.
I can say, I, I would like to ask, the worst thing they can do is tell me no, but it, it, it sounds like there's potential there, so to see if we can come up with some.
I, I may want to suggest to you, again, Seth and I will talk about and see what we got on our list, but I don't know that there's enough money for the Bingen underpass.
No, but it's, we still got to have all the ducks in a row on.
Right, exactly. And that's out of our control because Wash Dot is.
I did when I, because I was up in the legislature and I talked to Senator King and we had discussed the Bingen and it's high on the priority list as soon as all the sign offs, get to the sign offs without giving away what we currently have. Uh, but I think whether that one happens this year or not, good question, doubt it.
Uh huh.
See if there's another project that we can fill in on the interim to, to get handled. So.
We will definitely look at it. We're more than happy to use other monies.
Mm hmm. Well, it gives us one more road done or one more covert put in. It's fine with me.
Exactly.
Uh, find something that the state can go, yeah, that's a worthy project and let's see if we can get it handled.
We will definitely break back some things.
Okay, that's all I had. I want to thank you gentlemen for your, uh, your hard work in this interim process and I think you're doing a good job so far.
Okay, thank you.
All right, ten o'clock, uh, Public Health Director, Aaron Quinn, please step forward. You're the next contestant.
Oh boy, will I also be offered a million dollars?
Um, yeah, if you can fit it in the transportation budget, I probably. I think they were talking roads, not buses, but yeah.
Buses come next. It's ten thirty.
This is mine.
No, no, I need it back unless you can make copy of it.
I will give you a copy. Sorry, I need this one to talk to.
I just, eventually we're going to talk about it, so I figured you might want to read it.
I'll go through. Good morning. So you should get your statistics in the packet, a couple of updates. I did notice that I put December twenty three. These are actually the updates for December twenty two, so I apologize for that. Uh, we did have twenty breastfeeding support contacts in December for year to date of, uh, five hundred and twenty one. And actually, our year to date naloxone kit distribution is actually fourteen, not zero, so those are the corrections when I read through it again this morning. Um, environmental health, I think probably you've seen the graphs. It's definitely as far as permits go. We were down a little bit as compared to twenty one. Um, the total permits is definitely showing a lower permit count. Um, they're kind of looking at that as potentially a slower build year for twenty three. Um, but they still wanted to make sure that everybody knew that twenty one in comparison to other years was actually an anomaly. So looking at nineteen and twenty, um, twenty one may not be our best kind of comparison for what, uh, we're generally seeing in the county. Um, otherwise, uh, food safety, um, we did, uh, give a notice to Skamania County that we would not be providing food services for them after April first. Um, I did put some language in that said that we would help support them training a new staff. Um, so give them some technical support until July if they wanted that. Um, because there's definitely some, you know, uh, training and onboarding with a food inspector so that we would help support that training after April first if they wanted that from us. Um, I think they were looking into their options and they haven't really indicated how they're going to go, but, um, I know my group is working to get a lot of the food inspections that are due done prior to that April first date, so they don't have that kind of pile of paperwork to do once we leave. So they're helping them out with that. Um, at the end of the year for two thousand and twenty two, Creek State County had a hundred and thirty seven total permitted food establishments in the county. Fifteen of those were new, so, um, really pulling out of Skamania is going to give us a little bit more um, time to really focus on the food, food establishments in, in this county, so. That for clinical, do you have any questions about any of that? No, okay. Uh, for clinical health, um, I think right now, one of the biggest things that everybody's working on is the sexual reproductive health program. We are currently on a corrective action plan due to some non-compliance with grant requirements. Uh, we asked for some clarification on a process and through the questioning, they found that we were not in compliance and slapped us with a corrective action plan, which seems very punitive. Uh, this grant is fourteen thousand dollars and the administrative cost is very heavy and it is not providing money to actually see in clients. So we're really looking hard at whether we're going to continue this relationship in this program. Um, our supply costs are increasing significantly. We'll talk about that a little bit more at B O H this afternoon. Um, because we already have to, uh, adopt a new fee schedule even after we just adopted one and whenever we were here last November, I think November for Board of Health. So, um, our costs went for one of our I U Ds, it went from one hundred to four hundred dollars per. And one of them went from two hundred and fifty dollars to a thousand dollars. Um, so, uh, we are working through a cost analysis right now and we'll just continue to see if we can continue fiscally to support this program. Everyone in the department wants to keep it. I want to keep it. I don't know if we can pay for it. So that's not going to be popular. I'm just setting everyone up for expectation management. Uh, administratively, I do need verbal approval to advertise for my clerical position. One of my front office staff, Mackenzie, took a position in the recycling coordinator. Um, so I do need to fill that spot in Goldendale, so I'd like your verbal approval for that. A lot of non-verbal.
Verbal approval to post for a position.
Correct, yes.
Okay, you have three of us.
Thank you. Uh, we did change the health officer interview to Thursday. There were some scheduling issues, so, um, that'll be on the Thursday agenda, not on today's agenda. We are still advertising for our nurse position and we still have had no applicants. Uh, fiscally, we're preparing for our D O H fiscal audit, um, in March. Um, there's a long list of requirements for that, so Elizabeth and I are working through that. Um, and a couple of other process improvement, um, projects that we've gotten really a lot of support from other departments on. So Nicole in the auditor's office and Jamie and Senior Services and Pam have been really helpful in kind of helping us, uh, improve some of the processes around time sheets that were, um, making us just more efficient, even though it's taking a little bit more time in the, in the beginning. So questions about any of that?
Why do you think we have no applicants for the nurse position?
Um, because we don't pay very well and because public health isn't really popular. Um, but I mean, we're fun, so there is that.
It's a good place to.
Um, our, our public health wages are competitive against other pu- public health departments, but not within the nursing field in general. So we will never pay what the hospitals pay and that's always going to be a challenge in recruiting for us.
Well, and the hospitals are short on nurses too, so they're overpaying and they're hiring travel nurses for twice as much money and because they can't find nurses either, so.
Yes, I get those recruitment emails and then typically the, the pay is just obscene, frankly. So I, yeah, so it, it's going to be a challenge. It typically is. We've been lucky the last couple of years to get those positions filled with some really strong people and they've found other opportunities and moved on. Um, it's always going to be a challenge to fill those positions. So. Questions?
Questions? No questions over there. Any questions, Commissioner Zoller?
Not me, thank you.
No questions, no questions.
Great, behavioral health. Um, so I give you the, I don't have really a, we haven't worked through how to do an update, kind of like the statistics I give you for public health quite yet. So I got you the statistics off, um, beacon. So with, we do, that is who our contract for crisis services with, is with, so they have this chart, so until I develop something that's a little bit more, uh, user friendly to present to you all, I just shared this with you. So, um, I think there's a couple of things to look at. So we, uh, I think the D C R average response time from request to arrival. Um, we are never going to do really well, I don't think, compared to Clark and Skamania County. Um, we have a large county, uh, there's an hour in between. We have staff that live um, outside of Clickcat County, so even though they will make the one hundred and twenty minute target time. Um, I mean, just having a staff drive from White Salmon to Golden Dale, that's always going to be at least if they follow the speed limit, approximately sixty minutes. Um, so we're just not ever going to be comparable to those, so just be aware of that. And if there is a second call from one place to the second, there would be a delay there, so um, just when you're looking at those statistics in the future, remember that. Um, in the back, there is the information about, uh, the Lifeline Connections Triage Services, so how many calls they took with, they started with us in August. Um, so those calls Lifeline Connections dropped off on, uh, January sixth as far as their support goes with us. And so they, uh, we're now picking up all those triage calls, so definitely our, uh, workload has increased for the people that are on call. Currently, I have four D C Rs on contract. Uh, one is on the consent agenda today. I have Chris as our consultant still. Uh, I have two full-time D C Rs that both started in the last month. And most importantly, I now have one administrative support staff, Bree Kent. Um, she is changing my life. She is getting things done. I am just very grateful for everything she's done in the three days that she's worked here. Um, just to keep on the forefront of your mind, we need to consider again what, uh, office space in White Salmon may look like. Um, currently, they are still sharing the, um, health department space. They are using the nurses off, the empty nurses office. So at some point, to fill that nurse position, um, we need to make sure that they have a place to sit.
How many, I mean, I understand our White Salmon office is full of public health people. I'm assuming they all work in White Salmon or do some of them actually live here and commute there because that's their job?
Mm mm, nobody, I think I'm mostly the one that commutes back and forth the most, so White Salmon staff work in White Salmon. Yeah, there's definitely some, like the nurses go back and forth depending on the need for clinic days or that sort of thing, so it's.
But as far as office space, I don't know that we're using this one to the full capacity and that one's over capacity, but that's because they all live down there is.
Yeah, and then this, everybody lives, that lives down here, works down here. So, yeah. Um, they have shared my space in the past and I'm welcome to go back to doing that, but at some point there's going to be more than one person that wants to have a seat and do some work and use a coffee machine and all of those things.
Ideas to remedy the situation?
Um, I did email the city of White Salmon. I know they're remodeling the park center. Um, and just to kind of see what their plans are for that. Um, I think it's a good central location. We've also talked with, um, Culture Seed, who's another behavioral health agency within the county and talked about what it potentially would look like to cost share space. Um, and just have both services in the same space and, uh, save a little overhead, so. Um, those are some things we've discussed, but don't have any answers at this time. But mostly want you to know, we're still thinking about it, still looking for ideas. But at this time, like, we don't need anything today, right? But in, as we grow.
How are we, how are we looking with staff for behavioral health? Are they?
I have eight right now.
Well, are those eight living currently in White Salmon? And so you're looking at, we're going to have a space up here. Is it going to be an unused space? Or is there going to be one person in this office building and the other seven are down there? Are we building a location in the wrong spot?
I have out of the four contractors. Two are in White Salmon, two are in Goldendale. And I have two folks that live across the river and one person lives in another county, so they're pretty well dispersed.
But again, that's for crisis services. You know, when we talk about providing outpatient treatment services, that's going to primarily be different therapists. And we don't know where they live.
Well, the thing that I don't know that we can find out with our behavioral health is, is how many patients are over here versus how many patients are over there?
I think we talked about that. I think we'd asked the M C Os to get us that information and I don't know that I followed up on it, so let me.
Because that would be kind of the, you know, wherever the most patients are is where we should have our hub.
The hub's here, this county seat, that's where it's going. That's my decision. Unless you want me to go different. I mean, as the director, I was like, this is our main office, so.
This is the central part of the county.
I agree.
And then maybe we revisit that in a while, but I think we're close to, we're across the street from the jail and they are one of our biggest customers. So we have K V Hs here, the jails here, um, there is one hospital in Skyline, or, you know, on the other end, but, um, I, I think our calls, which aren't necessarily, I don't think in here, broken that, I think our calls reflect that we have more clients on this end, mostly because of the jail. Uh, but again, it's going to change. It changes every day. So we might decide differently in six months, but that's what we're looking at.
You might have one more client in six months.
We're going to have to fight to take a turn.
We're just going to keep a bed open, a bed open for employees.
Yeah, if I'm not in it, everyone wants to have a turn, yeah. Uh, we did submit a HERSA grant, uh, for one point two million dollars. Um, I'd like to thank the folks, Paul Lindberg and Claire, uh, whose name, last name, I just forgot. Um, are with the K League Group under a SWATCH grant. Um, they actually wrote the grant for us. Um, it's for three hundred thousand dollars over the course of three years and is really going to focus on the uninsured, the underinsured and the incarcerated. So helping fund, um, services and medication support for those people in the jail is going to be kind of their big focus. Um, and I think there's a focus also on anyone with substance use, um, and in pregnancy, which isn't as big of a population, so I think it'll really focus heavily on, on supporting the jail. Let's see, we are still advertising for a manager position. We have had no applicants. We maybe need to look at some recruitment strategies for that because I want someone on board.
True.
Yesterday would have been nice. Um, transportation is still an incredibly huge issue. The ambulance will not transport our clients.
Ambulance is not a taxi service.
I understand that. However, if you have been chemically restrained, you cannot be transported without medical support. So if I give you a sedative, I cannot just throw you in a car. And I, and so I understand, I mean, there's a lot of arguments, but there, there are some medical considerations there as well. Um, and we're saying that this person is a threat to themselves or to other people and then they are potentially sedated. They do have to be transported by medical personnel. Um, most of our mental health hospitals, well, all of our mental health hospitals that we use are over a hundred and twenty miles away. Their policy states that they will not transport more than a hundred and twenty miles. And that's, I, and I, I understand part of the rationale for that too, but we have to figure, there's, we have to come up with some other answer. We have to come up with some other solutions. Um, because not transporting these patients, like, we're getting them beds, we're getting them into places and then we cannot physically get them there. We're having people sit in the hospital for over thirty six hours because they can't be transported. And I think we've lost at least one bed where they could have gotten care because we can't get them transported. So anyway.
What are other counties doing for transport?
I think they're having similar issues. But anyway, I don't have a solution. We need a solution. Open to suggestions.
And I'm assuming you've talked to the E M S district and they're not flexible.
Um, they didn't, they're, no. That is not my understanding. And I, you know, they definitely have some rationale for their decision-making process, but we can't uh, at some point, we have to have some consideration for transportation. It can always be no. I understand that there are extenuating circumstances and that there will be times where they have to say no, but it can't be every time.
Right, but I, I kind of look at it from their perspective too, that if you have an ambulance off taking somebody for a trip to a mental health facility and in the meantime, somebody else had a heart attack and really needs to go to a hospital. Somebody just died because you were operating a taxi service to a mental health facility.
They have mutual aid agreements with other.
Time is.
No, I under, no, I understand. Like, we could argue it all day. Neither one of us is right or wrong, but the reality is.
They don't.
We have to come up with a solution.
I would hate to see them use one of their existing ambulances, which is, I, in my opinion, is already short. They, they could use one or two more. Um, it's almost like they need a dedicated, there needs to be some other kind of dev- dedicated. But it's just not used enough to pay somebody to sit around and.
No, we're, we're looking at like one to two times a month in our busy season is based on the statistics we have. Um, but, but losing access to hospital beds for these people that need treatment is, there, we, we need some, we need some options. Um, and I'm open to suggestions because I don't have any. But that's where we're going to need, that is our biggest issue right now and. But that's where we're going to need, that is our biggest issue right now and that is where I need the most help, so.
And you were saying the facilities do provide transportation up to 120 miles our way?
The ambulance doesn't like to be more than 120 miles outside of the district, so. But all of the mental health hospitals are further away than that. Currently, we're getting people into Winatchee is the hospital that's accepting our. So when they start looking, they have a list of hospitals in the entire state and they just have to start calling down the list until someone says yes. And when someone says yes, they say, okay, let's do this. They don't get to pick whoever's closest. I mean, it's a system problem.
Nail on the head there, that the, the hospital that we send them to is 120 miles away. That the problem is a lack of state hospitals. If there was more, they would be closer and then the EMS district would transport.
Yeah, no, it's a bigger issue.
It's kind of a state legislator issue that, that I don't know that we can fix.
It's a multifactorial issue, but that is an issue, I imagine at some point you will hear about it because there's some very unhappy people. Rightly so, on both sides.
You also have to think though, the, the costs continue to go up because as these people sit, you know, because they're a threat to themselves, then we have either a sheriff's deputy or a city officer is having to sit with them throughout that entire time. And they could be there for a day and continues to get, you know, it, it snowballs. And these people, and so I don't think saying that it's a taxi service is, I think that's a disservice. If you have a heart attack, that's life-threatening. If we have had a DCR come in and say this person is a threat to themselves, the community, or someone else, that is life-threatening. At the same level.
You've got to convince the EMS district to do that.
Correct, policy change. I'm certain we will talk about this again, like, it's going to just keep coming up until we have a solution, so anyway. Uh, we are meeting with psychiatrists this week. We're going to talk about a contract. You probably see that in the next couple of weeks. So we're going to look at the money. I, we're initially going to do his contract based on the money that I have, that I know that I have. So we'll probably do a couple of different contracts for him because I don't have the money to, for him to do all of the things he wants to do initially. So we're going to have to phase him in, he knows that. So we're going to get him on contract based on the, the money that I know that I have to spend before we get too much further and he's aware. So when you get that contract, it will look scary, but I did the math. And I'm happy to let you check my math because I am still a nurse. Don't do finance.
You were a director.
I am a director, I'm still a nurse. Um, just, and then some, just kind of to manage. I talked with Sunday yesterday and she had some concerns brought to her about just kind of the services. So I think it's important for everyone to remember that we still use Crisis Connections. So people should still call 988 or the Crisis Connections, the 1-800 number. That is not us that answers the phone, that is a different entity. However, if people are having issues with them not answering the phone or getting answers that they don't feel are appropriate, we would definitely want to hear about that so that we can let, Beacon actually holds a contract for them and I'm happy to let Beacon know that we are not happy with the service they're providing if that's the case. Um, our DCRs are only responding to the hospital and the jail. We respond once the person is medically cleared. I think there's a misnomer that we immediately show up at the hospital and that's not the case. They want to make sure that they have no medical issues first. Um, and they want to make sure that they're essentially sober, if they have any substance use onboard, to have a conversation with them, so they're not talking to someone under the influence. So even though we do respond within two hours, it's once the person's medically cleared. And so the person may be sitting there for a little while before they actually get to talk with someone. And I think that's been frustrating for families who think that maybe we could be there sooner. There are many instances where law enforcement do stay for either safety concerns or people that they consider flight risks. So it may not be uncommon to see law enforcement stay. We are grateful that they do that for us. We do not respond within the community, so we are not a mobile crisis unit. We're not responding with law enforcement. I think some people felt like that was our expectation. That is part of our strategic plan. But at this time, we're only doing the hospital and jail response where law enforcement, medical providers, or the jail have identified them as high-risk or crisis, or through crisis connections, so. Um, and we also, uh, we've responded to 100% of the calls that we were requested for. So I think there was some concern that we had not. And I did check with everyone this morning and everyone has responded, so. Just some education for Tuesday morning. Questions about behavioral health? I'm good, moving along. Yep, slowly but surely.
Yeah, I think eventually we're going to need to have a better community education program.
Yes, I am working with Athena, who's working on some marketing materials for us, building our website. We're working on those things, it's just not quick.
What do we offer, what don't we offer? Who do you call that may not be us?
Yes.
I don't know that it will answer all of the problems out there, but it would be a good start.
Yeah, I agree.
Nothing further?
Oh, I'll see you at two then.
What's Sunday here for, just for moral support or?
She's making sure I answered all the right questions.
Okay. Okay.
So we talked yesterday and she wanted to come be here too.
I wasn't sure if she was here for the, uh.
She's coming back at two.
Appointment or the public health official that we ended up rescheduling, so it's like.
Yeah, no, they, I left them yesterday.
Yeah, okay. I didn't want her sitting there for all day if there was a reason she was. Hey, what a waste of your time if there was, yeah, okay. All right, well, thank you ladies. Next up, 10:30, we are three minutes ahead. Senior Services Director Sharon Carter and Mid-Columbia Economic Development District Mobility Manager Kathy Fitzpatrick. I'm assuming she will be attending via Zoom?
Yes.
And there she is. Thank you. How's life ma'am? Busy, what's that like? I wouldn't know.
But good.
Thank you.
So I wanted, with the department update primarily to start with summarizing kind of the history of transportation services through Clickatet County Senior Services/Mount Adams Transportation. Because I know there's a lot that's happened over a pretty substantial period of time. And there's, I think, a lot of confusion too between Mount Adams and senior services. And, and so I just had provided, there's kind of a written summary of some of historical pieces with Senior Services/Mount Adams Transportation, but it leads into what Kathy's going to share regarding kind of the gorge, you know, regional transit strategy and where things are going with transportation that way. But, um, Mount Adams Transportation is a DBA, a Doing Business As subset of my department, Senior Services Department. And we originally, it, it was housed in senior services because it started out actually as just a senior bus. There was actually a, a van on each end, you know, Goldendale and White Salmon. There was different fundraising that happened to make that happen. And those services really started with Older Americans Act funding to provide transportation for seniors because that's always been one of the top identified issues and challenges for seniors. And through the years, that has really expanded. And in part, that expansion has, you know, benefits the seniors greatly because we can tap into a lot more services and supports by opening up transportation services to other disabled populations and individuals as well as the general public. So Roger Gadway, who was my predecessor and was the director, was with, you know, Clickatet County for about 25 years. He was definitely one that was kind of the leader in looking at, okay, what are some ways that we can access support and services for a senior population as well as, within senior services, we actually assist disabled adults as well. And so that started with looking at areas too where there was a definite need was a lot of the folks in Clickatet County that were on Medicaid and needed transportation just to get to medical appointments and that. And so there was initially a contract with the state and then through the Medicaid Transportation Brokerage where we started providing transportation for folks of, of all ages that are contracted through that Medicaid program. And in turn, that Medicaid program and the revenue that comes from that, we're able to use that as match for other grants and transportation services. So, so over the years, there's been different applications. We've consistently had what's termed usually like as a dial-a-ride or demand-response service, where a person calls ahead of time and, you know, they provide their address. We register them, they actually schedule a ride or trip being picked up it, from their home and taken to a destination and returned. And through that dial-a-ride service, and again, the focus of the dial-a-ride service has also been on really essential services, medical, essential needs, getting, you know, groceries, food bank, social service appointments, things like that. But we've also, in addition, been able to do with Older Americans Act funds, some recreational type ones for seniors and to get them to like the senior nutrition sites and meal programs as well. So in addition to looking at partnering and, and developing, you know, accessing grants, there was, they did do a demonstration grant, project initially. And that has, you know, developed more into consistent funding that we have access through the Washington State Department of Transportation Consolidated Grant Program. That program has what is a consolidation of various grants in Washington State. And it can, it's a mix oftentimes of, it can be state funds, it can be federal funds, it can be a mix of those. So we've, over the years, applied for whatever we can get. And so we do have to keep pretty high, you know, high standards in terms of meeting a lot of the, the documentation and requirement levels for federal grants for that, even though the, those may vary. So in terms of drug testing and that too for drivers and. But this has really allowed us to be able to, again, expand more of the dial-a-ride service. And then over the years, we've also applied at different times and tried different services. Prior to my coming on 15 years ago, there was a Job Access Reverse Commute Grant that was used to do workforce transportation to the Dows and Hood River, similar to what we have now, but that did not continue on because of, I think, there was, there's always the challenge with the distances. We're going to have enough frequency of stops to have ridership really develop. And so at that time, it was not supported and that went away. And again, we continued dial-a-ride service. But we were recognizing, again, in more recent years and when we, we started getting requests where we, we did a project where we were doing a fixed route. When we were taking people for dialysis, we were basically indicating people could ride on, on, and doing a route Monday, Wednesday, and Friday between White Salmon, Binge, and Hood River because we were going back and forth anyway on those days to take dialysis clients. And we were getting a, a lot of consistent ridership with that. We were getting folks that needed to get, obviously bike and pedestrian access also was a challenge because the Hood River Bridge doesn't have that. And as we saw that ridership increasing and, and that demand, and then there were different requests ongoing through our Human Service Transportation Planning Meetings and different inter-agency meetings about need for transportation, transportation that we did apply for a regional mobility grant back in 2017 and to do a fixed route between Goldendale and the Dows and White Salmon, Binge, and Hood River. And so we were able to start that route in 2018 with, again, regional mobility grant funds, which is a competitive grant process that we were told we probably would never get, and we did. And we did have to shut the service down during the pandemic. There was a recommendation to, to halt that for a period of time, but we were able to resume that service again. And in your, there is a sheet that gives our fixed route ridership graph that gives you kind of, you'll see the period that we were shut down, but where our ridership was pre-pandemic and then current ridership. And it hasn't fully bounced back to pre-pandemic levels. But we are definitely feeling like we're getting more consistent, consistently people aware of it. But that's also something that has been addressed in terms of, with Gorge Translink and the Gorge Pass, is being able to do more outreach and education and make people more aware of actually how to ride the fixed route services. So that grant has shift, had shifted to a consolidated grant program this last biennium. That funding goes through June 30th of this year. And in this last cycle of consolidated grant funding, we had reapplied to continue our dial-a-ride service and also continued these fixed route services. And we expect to hear, hopefully, in February or March, but sometimes it's run to very last minute for the next round. But we actually applied for four years of funding, which has been a relatively new process with the consolidated grant program. So we anticipate hopefully of securing four years of funding for dial-a-ride and the two fixed routes coming this, the end of this fiscal year, which ends June 30th. So we continue to get requests for expansion. And, and I'm sure, I know Commissioner Zoller had, has heard from Lyle, Community Council had recently, I know I had several calls from folks asking about a connection between basically White, Binge, and White Salmon and, and Dow Sport. Because our, our current Golden Dell route goes through, down into Wishram and then Dow Sport and then over to the Dows. And wanting to have a connector so we actually have more of that east-west Clickatet County connection. But that was something that we had talked before this last cycle and the board wasn't supportive of looking because it, it will involve funding, match will be needed in order to do an expansion of that route. So, but that is something that's, that's consistently coming up. And, and I think maybe the sheriff's office has probably brought it up too about that need to have an east-west connection. So part of Gorge Translink, it was developed as a, an alliance in 2001. I think was more the formal development of Gorge Translink. And that's just been a partnership of the transportation providers in the gorge. So it's been, you know, Mount Adams with Clickatet County, Skamania County Transit. It's Sophie who's their manager of senior services and Skamania Transit in Skamania County. And then on the Oregon side, it's Columbia Area Transit for Hood River and, and Wasco County Link Transit and then Sherman County Transit. So the five counties. And it's been providers we've been meeting to try and, and over the years, work on how do we try to connect and help each other with transportation services and communication and needs? And in. in, I think it was about two thousand ten or eleven, we actually were able to secure funding and that, and all the different counties provided some match support to fund a mobility manager through McHead, which is now Kathy. And we did have a couple of different mobility managers prior to Kathy, but Kathy's been on since what year? Year muted, I think.
Two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen. So, and we've made, I feel like there's been tremendous amount of progress in terms of kind of development of, of looking again at the gorge and how we can kind of connect and try to limit some of these overlapping things and repetition of services and actually making more available in the gorge. And so through Kathy and the mobility management, we had actually, some of the funding to help provide match for our fixed route had come about through in situ purchasing employee passes to ride, you know, the route. And, and then eventually that has then that morphed into an actual gorge pass. So we've had now the gorge pass for is this three years now?
This will be three years.
So this will be the third year of the gorge pass, which provides a pass, an annual pass that individuals can purchase for a bargain price of forty dollars and ride unlimited on the different fixed route services of the five different transportation providers in the gorge and connecting. So you actually can, you can actually get from Goldendale to Portland with a gorge pass. And you may not be able to return the same day, but there is, there are connections to be able to do that. But
How many annual passes would you guess that you, or the gorge pass sells yearly? Do you know?
They just did an update yesterday.
Yeah, we just did. I think, because we weren't looking at, did we look at twenty twenty-two numbers for the year? Because we were kind of chopping it up by, by monthly sections. I think, I think twenty twenty-two, I want to say it's, I want to say that, that we sold eight thousand passes total. Does, does that make?
That's what was coming in my mind, but I can't remember if it was twenty twenty-two or partial. Yeah.
Right, because we were looking at over the winter season as well, which have, which would have included this January twenty twenty-three.
Any of those are on the south side of the river? And how many of those are on the north side of the river?
Oh, definitely the bulk is, is Oregon. Because, you know, where
The bulk is Hood River too, is my guess, but
Well, yeah, Portland, because there's, there's the Gorge Express, which is coming up and that's part of where we're benefiting in that we would never have the volume of fare revenue or pass sales in our little, you know, if, if we were just talking Clickatet County. But we're getting, we get a share of the revenue that's coming from the gorge pass that is, would far exceeds what we would actually be able to garner.
Some of those aren't even coming this far. They're getting on a bus in Portland and driving up to Multnomah Falls. And then going back and we're still getting revenue from it, I guess.
Yeah, so, yeah, the bulk of those aren't, yeah, coming here. But, you know, there are people that have access to use the pass. And then our benefit is for our citizens can actually get an access for a very affordable price, you know. And, and we've had folks that were, you know, using for commuting to work. So you buy a pass for forty dollars and you're able to ride to work, you know, every day. Round trip, that really adds up. So definitely a benefit that we have been able to garner from that. And just part of that in terms of working as, you know, a region is to try and tap into some of those, that money that's coming from Portland to be able to expand services for our area.
Well, and I was just able to sit in on a transportation committee meeting. And it's becoming more and more professionalized to bring people up from Portland for the recreation. They now have maps. They've identified trails on our side. So as Multnomah Falls gets busy and you pick somewhere else to go, you're going to be coming to Dog Mountain or all the other trail locations. And they're figuring out how to provide that year-round rather than just seasonal. And it looks like to me the CAT bus is going to be kind of the major thoroughfare. And if we can figure out how to move everybody down from our county and to those major hubs, then they can go into Portland after we bring them down.
And then that's in turn where CAT is, you know, we had talked about that because you know, the request or demand to want to have some weekend transportation for, you know, Benjen, White Salmon to Hood River and that too during, you know, the tourist season, that, that would be pretty involved for us to do because we don't operate weekend, you know, you're talking about quite a bit of expense and that too. And it wasn't something that we were looking at being able to do. So it was approaching, CAT was interested in providing that if there was somebody that would provide the match. So I had connected with, and Amy Schloppy, who's the executive director for CAT. And then we actually met with the city of Benjen and White Salmon. And then those cities committed to providing the match that would be needed for the grant. So they applied for consolidated grant funding to be able to provide weekend summer service between Hood River and White Salmon, Benjen, because they are already operating weekend service up and down the gorge during the summer. And they did do a temporary one during COVID, well, with COVID funds during a previous year that was well-received. And so hopefully, they receive that grant and are able to provide that. And that, you know, it's looking at, again, partnering and seeing not necessarily that Mount Adams and Clickatet County, you know, senior services is going to be the one and only provider because even on the Oregon side, you know, they're using, you know, they have the Columbia Gorge Express, but then they have some private companies that are doing, is it the Sasquatch line? And there's a couple of private charter companies that then do the trail accesses and things for Multnomah Falls, right Kathy?
Right. They're, they're working, the private providers are working closely with ODOT because there, there's, you know, the congestion issue and the waterfall corridor is so great and traffic accidents. The, the Multnomah County Sheriff was just you know, it, it just was really creating chaos for, for all the county agencies. And so, so the private providers are working closely with ODOT and, and worked out a permitting system, which really funneled a lot of people onto the private shuttles. Columbia Area Transit still providing that, you know, that, that kind of corridor service, the main corridor service to the falls and then on to Cascade Locks and then on to Hood River. But the private providers really providing that, that more tourism-focused, you know, trailhead to trailhead. And so Columbia Area Transit also worked hand-in-hand with ODOT and the two private providers to, to, to really successfully mitigate a lot of the congestion and traffic problems last summer.
And so then, part of, and, and why Kathy is, is here also is to talk about so there was funding that was received to work on a, you know, gorge regional transit strategy because of just demands or requests and, and transportation is always one of those top items. Any of the, you know, surveys and needs assessments and that are done in throughout, you know, the gorge. Transportation, transportation is always in those top. If not, you know, housing has been one that's filtered up there high, but transportation has, has typically always been in those, in the top three at least of issues and needs. And so part of what with the gorge regional transit strategy was to look at what were some of the future plans and needs and that for the gorge region. And then in part, looking at, well, how does this work? Because we have different entity, you know, you're talking about two different states and five different counties. And then you have different ones where they're actually a transportation district that receives taxing and then their own. And then you have where it's a government entity, where it's a county with their elected officials and and how do you work all together to be able to, one, I guess, look at maximizing your bang for your buck, in a sense too, is really looking at planning and say, what does this matter? How can we potentially get more transportation and services and access those resources without it having to be always coming out of, you know, county coffer or whatever, you know, looking at partnerships and ways that we can access. And really professionals also and experts that can look at what transit and transportation is. Because in, in a couple of situations, especially in Clickatet and Skamania County, the folks, the directors of the transportation entity, you know, were, were social service background primarily and have basically had to learn transportation and, and work within that set. But we're, our focus is still primarily been more of a social service entity and that's in part. But we also have a lot of, we've been able to provide a lot because we have staff, you know, we've got we're leveraging other resources and positions and things like that to be able to do that. So but I will turn it over to Kathy to kind of talk about where we're at in, in some of the, the gorge regional transit strategy and looking at kind of governance even of that and how, how that would work and, and what, wanting to get some feedback related to that.
Thanks so much, Sharon. That's, that's just such a great overview. In it, am I, do I have sharing? Yes, I do. Thank you so much. Let me bring my screen up. And then let me do the slideshow. There we go. All right. Great. So, so I'm, I'm bringing to you today an update because the last time that I presented before the Clickatet County Board of County Commissioners was just last year after we had finished Phase One of this, of this regional transit strategy. And Phase One was really, and I'll just remind you, Phase One was really all about developing a vision and goals. We worked really hard with, with, you know, all five counties, with the elected leaders, with federal agencies like US Forest Service, the Gorge Commission, with, with Health and Human Services and Organizations and Agencies, state agencies on both sides of the river. So state parks on both sides of the river with private entities. So working with the private transportation providers, but as well our private businesses. So like Sharon mentioned, we've established over the last few years a real strong, a strong partnership with the In situ and that partnership continues to grow with other, with other, the, the tech industries, most of which are located in Clickatet County. So, so the, the community college, of course, our convener was the, was the president of the community college, Dr. Marta Cronin. So, so bringing all of these different entities together to craft a vision statement was quite a feat. And because everybody has their, their own, you know, their, their own needs for, from public transportation. So whether it's the Sheriff's Department of Skamania County, dealing with the congestion and traffic deaths that occurred at Dog Mountain Trailhead and needing a shuttle system to alleviate that. Or whether it's, you know, a student trying to get from Goldendale to the community college in the Dows. Everybody's got kind of a slightly or a great may, maybe a big different perspective on, on their needs for public transportation. So and, and this was something that I brought to you, our vision statement that we had crafted, I brought to you last year. And there was great consensus from the three commissioners and from each of the five counties. Their governing boards all reached consensus on our vision and, and our goal areas. And I'll just read the vision really quick. Public transit supports thriving Columbia River Gorge communities by providing access to critical services, higher education, jobs, and outdoor recreation while protecting the natural wonders of the gorge. So, and our goal areas are, you know, kind of all over the board from economic vitality to high-quality service. So, so really expecting our public transportation service to be really high-quality. So everyone will want to ride. Looking at environmental stewardship and mitigating congestion. And then, of course, you know, the, the underpinning of all would be finding that financial sustainability for the system. So we have a great, so Phase Two, let's we're, we're going to move on to Phase Two. So, so that launched just this last year. And we have a wonderful project management team, you know, representative of both states. Really great consultant team of, of, you know, that includes financial experts, so Echo Northwest. Public involvement as experts, Plan Engineering, which is located there in Washington State. And of course Kittleson, a well-known transportation and public transportation consultant. Our advisory committee, again, is, you know, every one of the transportation providers are, are represented. Wash dot ODOT and, and then of course your own South Coast Washington Regional Transportation Commission. So we've had great, really great engagement from the Transportation Council and on, of course, the advisory committee, but also in the STAG meetings and, and just me being able to, as an ex-official member of both Clickatet and Skamania Policy Committees, being able to give regular updates on the transit strategy. So we've been really involved with that, with that group that represents your transportation plannings. So, so just real quick snapshot of where we're at, we're kind of, you know, coming down the the last stretch here. We did have the Key Initiatives Workshop. Commissioner Zoller wasn't able to attend that one. It was for the, the you know, all of our decision-makers. But, but she did attend it the next, the next two days. There was a stakeholder advisory group meeting and she was able, able to attend that. And, and I was really happy to see her there, that just really great engagement and a lot of great input as well. So, so really excited about the level of Clickatet County engagement in our process. And, and just, just to say the stakeholder advisory group is, is that same large body that, you know, of, of representatives from all the five counties, state, federal representatives. Some state and federal elected leaders as well, of course, county leaders, some of the county leaders attending as, as well. So, so we've got about a hundred and fifty people on the stakeholder advisory group list. Generally, each meeting we get between fifty and sixty attending, which is quite a lot. So, so we do, you know, people are engaging in the chat and engaging verbally, however they feel comfortable or, you know, adding to the memos that are presenting to them, just, just with, with written comment. So, so great engagement there. So, so we'll be looking at, coming back to you probably in June. So, so we'll be looking at, coming back to you probably in June, July with the, with our final, with the, with the final report, which I promise you won't be more than, I think 12 pages was, was what we had tasked the consultant with whittling it down to. Cause, because we have hundreds of pages of memos so far. So, so phase two, what, what, what are we doing with phase two? Phase two is operationalizing the vision. So we have this, this high lofty vision and these goal areas. But how, how do we actually, what's the nuts and bolts of, of putting it on the road? What, what's the, you know, the, what's the roadmap here? So we're looking at, at, you know, what, what are those, you know, what are those, those great strategies that we should be tackling next, like within the one, one to three years? You know, as far as like, like putting more buses on the road or, you know, maybe extending the routes? Or, you know, maybe, you know, is, maybe all the buses should be the same color? You know, talk, talking about those kind of nuts and bolts kind of questions, which, which are generally have been more on a staff level in, in the past with the gorge trans and alliance. And then, and then the, the hefty, kind of that, that hefty conversation about, about an organizational structure. So the gorge trans and alliance is since, as you know, has been around for 23 years now and, and has been operating on the staff level. So I'm the mobility manager and I, I facilitate and convene the meetings and help coordinate. But I, I think the gorge translink alliance, you, you know, what we have agreed is that we've kind of come as far as we can go in 23 years without, without decision, you know, the policy leaders, the decision makers getting, getting you all in the room. And, and so what does that look like? So, so we're really exploring those options and I'll be showing you some of those options, possibilities that the consultants have come up with and, and some recommendations in, in just a couple of slides. And then also of course, a real focus on financial opportunities, new financial opportunities. So here's the nuts and bolts, you know, looking at, okay, time transfers and first mile, last mile. You know, how do people get to the bus stop? You, you know, some, some routes are seasonal, you, you know, like the Dog Mountain Shuttle. You, you know, people just want to walk the trail in April and May. So, you know, it doesn't run other times. So that, you know, look, looking at the nuts and bolts, which, which again is, is some of that is on, you know, has, we've been really able to address on a staff level. But we're, we're more and more, we're needing, we're needing more assistance. So this is our vision map. And as I'm looking at it, I mean, for some of you, you may not realize that the vision map is actually at first glance is not much different from what already exists. So, so which is, which is just fabulous. So we already have, you know, Skamania County is already going from, from Vancouver to, to Clickatet County. And of course, you know, cat routes are going up to Mount Hood, they're going over to Portland. The, the link public transit is already doing a lot of, a lot more public transit than they've ever done in the past, just over the last two years. And, and then of course, Clickatet County, I, I just have to give Clickatet County just absolute kudos. I, I mean, look at, look at all of what they're providing for people. So, so from Goldendale to the DOWS, you know, multiple times a day, from White Salmon Bigin to Hood River. Sharon, is it eight or nine times a day? Nine times a day. It's just extraordinary. And because we're not talking just inter-community, going to all of the major communities within your county. But, but they're, they're going across two bridges into, into two other counties and another state. So it, it just really is extraordinary what they've been able to do. And, you know, when you hear the individual stories, when you hear about that person in Goldendale who is finally, you know, as an older adult, finally has the freedom and the independence to jump on a bus, go get lunch in the DOWS. And this person is also going to Portland quite frequently. I, it's just truly, truly amazing what, what the system is already bringing to, to your residents and to the residents within the gorge. So, so as I look at this map, you, you know, there's, there's just a few things that, that were, you know, we, we see, okay, we've got, we've got a future vision for that, that would be like Sharon had described, that, that connection from Dallasport to Benjen through Lyle. So, so, so that's, you know, that, that's kind of been on the, you know, on the planning books for, for, for quite a while. And that's something we can work towards. But I, I think the vision map really mostly, we're looking at more frequencies. Like, like let's make this more available to more people so that they can get to school and back quicker so that they can make those, more of those connections. So they can get from Goldendale to Portland and back in a day. So that they can get from, from, from Stevenson in Skamania County to the community college and back in a day. So, so really looking at, at upping those frequencies, because I think we, you know, we're, 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 we're almost, if you, if you look at that map at first glance, you know, we're already kind of doing 99% of this. So, so it's just chipping away at, at really making this a real, real usable system for everyone. So, so what problems are we trying to solve? So, so we really want to make, make the system usable for everyone. So, so that like Sharon had said, we're having, although we have lots of marketing campaigns, we're still having issues with people not even knowing that the service is available. So, so we're working on that, but, but there's a lot more to do. Looking at our governmental system. So, so what is it, you know, with our policymakers? How can we make the regional system more coordinated on the policy level with, with the, with our decision makers? Looking at regional equity so that our rural areas are getting, you know, are getting their fair share. Not leaving out those, those sparsely populated areas, making sure that those residents are, get the transportation services that they need. Looking at efficiencies and Sharon talked about that. Okay, if, if Columbia Area Transit is already running a dispatcher and a field operator on weekends and Clickatet County is not, why would you want Clickatet County to have to take on weekend service? Because it's not just the bus driver, they're going to have to hire a dispatcher, they're going to have to hire, hire a field operator. There's so much that goes in background. So, gosh, Columbia Area Transit can do it so much cheaper. So why not? So looking at those efficiencies. And then, and then staff burden and expertise. We've got some staff that, that are real experts in what they do. And then some staff, like Sharon said, that are really home health experts. So they're not public transit experts. So, so really looking at that and sharing, sharing that burden and sharing the expertise as well. And then of course, finding new funding. So funding, funding, funding. So I'm going to move forward. So this is, this is a quick snapshot of, of the, of the ideas for organizational, a new organizational structure. So, so moving a step forward from the, the gorge translink alliance would be enhanced status quo, which would, you know, maybe mean that would do one policy summit a year, that, that sort of thing. You know, more as a check-in and an update, but, but all decisions remain at staff level. That's, that, that won't get us very far. I think what the consultants have really locked into is creating a regional transit advisory board. Now, this is something that McCad had in the past. It was mostly focused on Wasco County and the link. But, but it's an idea that, that the consultants actually came up with again and said, look, you know, McCad, this could be a subcommittee of McCad. McCad is comprised of all of the interested parties, whether it be private enterprise or the county commissioners, the cities. So, so we have, we have a lot of the interested parties that are already part of McCad. And McCad could form a regional transit advisory board and staff that board. You know, with, with not meetings every week, but perhaps once a quarter, but really looking at policy level decision-making. Also creating that, that coordination and that visibility for state legislators, for, for federal entities, you know, looking, making, making that, that visibility, looking cohesive, coordinated and, and fundable. So, so, so it's, their recommendation was to start with this board because you couldn't really go on to say a level four or five, which is creating like a regional co-op or a transportation management organization without first having those decision makers all in room together. So, so get those decision makers in the room together. You know, of course, the devil's in the details, you know, what kinds of decisions are they able to make? Or are they merely advisory to, they go back to their, to, to the county boards? So, so really, you know, kind of working together to nail down the, the rules, their roles and, and responsibilities. So, so, so that's been the real push from the, from the consultants. During our, our, the, the key initiatives workshop where we had decision makers in the room, there was real enthusiasm to, you know, to, to start this, that, you know, there wasn't really any concern other than I think one, the chair of the Columbia Area Transit Board was concerned about McCad appearing to have some conflict of interest because McCad is not only McCad, but it also operates and manages the link. So having all of those guardrails in place will be really important. So, so it's just, it's, it's really a great, I think, next, next step. And I, and I'd love to get your input in just a second. I'll just finish up these slides really quickly and see, see what you all think about a regional transit advisory board that's run out of McCad. So we also looked at funding opportunities, a lot of them, as you can see, are, are, are linked to the different organizing structures. And there's a great chart that Echo Northwest put together as far as looking at, you know, what structures are going to bring us the most funding. So, so, but of course you have to, you know, kind of balance that with how difficult those structures might be to, to, to bring forth into the world. So, and, and I can talk more about this kind of thing if, if anybody's interested at another time. Also memo five really goes into great detail to, to give you more information if you're interested. So we did stakeholder interviews where we really picked decision makers from cities, counties and, and really, and private enterprises as well, and really interviewed people getting their input. I think, I think the, the biggest concern is that the smaller communities may lose their voice if there's a decision-making organization. And so, so, you know, really making sure that, that we are successfully putting those guardrails in place. So everyone has an equal voice. And, and then here's next steps. This is my last slide. So we did the key initiatives workshop. We are, we're going to have another stakeholder survey, a public survey. We've already launched one, we'll probably have one more. We will be continuing with our advisory committee meetings and the stakeholder group meetings through June. And then in June, we'll have the revised transit strategy and in July, I'll be back in front of you again. And so, so I'll let it go there. I'd really like to hear your, you know, what, what you think right off the top. Let me stop sharing. Okay. Oh gosh. Oh, I know, I know. Okay. Wait a minute. I've got to see the. I can't get my, if. Stop video. Oh, there it is. Stop share. Okay, great. So I'd, I'd love to hear your input on, on McCad forming a regional transportation advisory board for public transportation.
I'm good.
I have to say, being involved, I'm so impressed with the effort you're doing. It's really, really clear. It has a good vision. Everybody's participating. It's a great project. And I think it has a natural flow that we're moving towards more and more and more public transportation. It's going to happen. I myself would be in favor of the board that you spoke of, a formalized board. I think it's going to be necessary in the future as your plans formalize and we get functioning. I, I want to see it have longevity and, and represent everybody, everyone and have that voice for everyone, equal voice. And you're going the right way. You're creating all those steps for that.
Opinions here? Go ahead. I, I see where Commissioner Zoller is coming from and, and she's obviously very passionate about this and that's good. I guess part of me worries about a regional board, worries about what kind of potential plan they come up with that may not be the direction that the, the county actually wants to go. So I do worry about it, but I'm not opposed to having the board and hearing what they come up with. Seeing some of the things up on your spreadsheet with taxation and by state, you know, board controlling things that it kind of, I don't know, anytime you get higher government than me in the equation, it scares me to death. So that's kind of where I'm at. Mike?
Of course, I, I always want more information, more data, more details before I make a, a decision. You know, I'm just looking at our fixed ridership numbers and I got about a bunch of questions on our dial ride service. And so did you say that you make nine trips a day between Goldendale and the DOWS or what?
No, that's only four.
Four trips a day?
Between Goldendale and the DOWS. Between seven and seven, and then it's nine between Hood River and White Salmon.
Okay, so that, that changes my numbers a little bit. But when I look at the numbers, you know, on our, our highest month of August in 2022, we had 979 riders. We had 23 days of operation. So that turned out to be 42 people per day. Or that's not even 42 people, that's 42 riders per day. Could have been only 21 people per day. On our low months, which is the same amount of trips, correct?
Right, we're doing the same. I mean, it's just, we do have some holidays that were, you know, few, some fewer days in certain months or when we've had extreme weather, we have had canceled.
And then, so then we're looking at 352 riders per day. So I'm just looking at in between, which works out to 15 riders per day, which could be as little as eight or seven, you know, on average. And so I look at, I look at the usage numbers and, and I looked at the usage numbers from, you know, prior to COVID. Because I, I wanted to see how that changed and how that grew and the, the speed at which it's growing. And, and I want to see more on our overall costs. Like, you know, is this the most efficient way to transport people, 42 people per day? On average at the maximum versus, you know, potentially seven people per day for how much money we're spending. And whether that looks at the, you know, looking at that more regionalized approach or how that goes. I just need more information before I'm willing to make a decision.
Well, and I think, you know, the thought of the regionalized approach is looking back at, well, is the expectation that Clickatet County is the only transportation provider and funding that along with grants versus looking at, does it make sense for maybe a cat doing a route? looking at, does it make sense for maybe a cat doing a route that's through the region where they're doing a fixed service over the main corridors? But we're still Mount Adams as the dialer ride and then connector routes in there. That, that, it doesn't mean, because I, I feel like the way it's been in the past or, and that it's thought of with even some other providers coming over as, oh, you know, that's Clickatuck County Mount Adams Transportation, we can't provide that service here. Well, we would be open to anybody that's going to provide service and support that, because the issue is, is it's not really the county that wants to be subsidizing and providing that, but looking at getting access to more for the citizens of Clickatuck County, but not necessarily costing more out of, say, the county corporate, you know.
I would, I would agree with that, and I would echo what Commissioner Anderson had to say. I think all of us would love it if there was bus service everywhere we wanted to go 50 times a day.
Right.
But we also are well aware that mass transit is heavily, heavily subsidized. Because the cost per fare, if you were actually going to charge the person on the bus, you'd have to charge them 10 bucks to, to be self-sufficient. With that, we have bus service in this county because the state offers us money. And we don't have to put a lot of county resources and dollars in it. That's my fear of having a, a regional board or going to some state-run thing is they start demanding that we come up with money that we don't necessarily have to grow a program. If, you know, if we're not in, you know, Cat wants to run service in our county and not charge us and, or use state grant money, I'm totally fine with it. But I just, I guess I have this fear that there's going to be a, a future ask for more funding. So hesitant in that regard, just wanted to kind of clarify that a little bit. Any more comments over there?
And I've only been in one meeting. But the feeling I did get from it was the CAT effort was very positive about bringing over more connection lines and more service that would complement what we already do with our community. And we would be able, and other people, and we'd be able to not be so heavily upgraded ourselves, but be able to connect to them and provide better service to our clients to go further. Where we don't have to offer to take them, or they wouldn't get to go. That was the first look I saw on the maps and also just.
Right, I get that, but I guess my question is, what's in it for CAT? How are they gonna, how are they gonna pay for gas? How are they gonna pay for bus service because it's not off a ticket sales?
And I wouldn't, I don't want to overcommit CAT too, because I think there's been, you know, CAT is, has willing, you know, they're doing the weekend, summer route.
For the route that.
For this application that they've applied. But they're not looking at, they're not saying that they want to provide all, you know, it could be a completely different, or say it becomes a, a gorge fixed route, right? You know, and then they look at, you know, and, and then not say there wouldn't be an ask, like, oh, well, do you want to help support this? But it would still ultimately be up to the board to say, well, no, we don't have the resources for this. But feeling like there might be the ability to tap into other grants and supports. And, but not saying that it has to be Mount Adams and Clickatuck County is the provider, or even CAT, or that it's, I think some of that is, is like not known, what that's going to be. And it could be, oh, it makes more sense financially to hire a private charter, you know, Martin's Gorge George to do some of this thing, and then we can connect because we know they're going through it this time or something. But I think there's a lot of, you know, unknowns with that, but the idea of, and I, you know, I had expressed that I was sure that, you know, because what, you know, some of the different models were, you know, a transportation district, which has not passed. And, you know, I mean, it passed in Clickatuck County, but did not pass for funding the tax. And that was a number of years ago, but whether that could change. But looking at that not being very realistic and that maybe an advisory board where you had representation from, you know, elected, and I don't know really that they outlined specifically. You know, some of that, that's still to be determined, even an advisory board, who sits on that? Is it, and is it just advisory, or will there actually be formal decision making? But there is a cost to all those too. And so that was, some of my concern was in developing some of this, do you end up having an organization that costs so much that you're taking away some of the service as well?
And that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from, is, is if I see for myself, only speaking for myself, that I don't see a lot of money in our budget to go for growth. If we step up another program and some of the grant money that we're currently providing in services now goes to pay secretaries and office staff to take minutes for meetings and whatnot, that's less bus service we might have on the road. Because we now stepped up a research team that government loves to create teams of people to try to outthink projects and not get anywhere. And that's my fear of it, but I'm willing to hear more.
The good thing is, it's the ground floor.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, we're, it's also, and I think there was the one slide too that Kathy was showing that we're not talking just fixed routes, you know, that it's all, I mean, we're talking about other, various forms of transit and connection, how you get people, you know, whether it's electric vehicles that can be, are located like at the airport where folks that are flying in then can have access to get in and use that, you know, looking at other forms, because it's not realistic to have fixed route buses running to every location, because that was in part of us even being able to do Goldendale to the Dows and White Salmon and Hood River, is those were really population centers that we felt we could get some, but when, like you're pointing out, we're not talking huge numbers. But we're also talking, we're using the little 14, 12 and 14 passenger vehicles. We're not using a, a 25 passenger bus to do those.
So we're, we're just a little different than metropolitan areas that are taking cars off the road
Yeah.
to, you know, reduce traffic and whatnot, and we're reducing traffic across the bridge, seven trips a day. So it's not like we're reducing the traffic with our transit, we're giving rides, so it's, it's a different approach and.
I would say that when you were talking earlier about a taxi service. Well, that's more what this is.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's a heavily subsidized, that if there was no grant dollars, I don't think this county would have a program.
How many, how many people a month are you giving rides on your Dial-A-Ride program? For comparison between the two pro-
Well, so Dial-A-Ride, we're talking, we're doing about 15,000 trips a year. But I, you know, specifically individuals. And then I would have the data for the unduplicated folks too, because we have, you know, we have people that we're doing a lot of rides for because we're taking them to dialysis three times a week, round trip.
Trips.
But we, we have all of those. I can, I can pull the specific numbers for 2022 for you too.
I would be curious, I would imagine your Dial-A-Ride service skyrocketed during COVID and the buses shut down. Did it go back to status quo when those people get back on the buses? Or is that why rider step is still down because Dial-A-Ride is 100 people a month higher than it used to be?
Yeah, so Dial-A-Ride is very specifically focused on destinations though, and, and use for essential medical, you know, the fixed route, people on and off, no matter what. We do encourage people if they're physically able and capable and could ride a fixed route to go to an appointment. So say you have Water's Edge, I have a provider at Water's Edge, we do have some people that will get on the fixed route and ride that versus other people that need, you know, so the Dial-A-Ride difference though is more of people that actually need door through door, door-to-door assistance because they've got some physical or mental challenges. We do have people that are functional though too, that are using the Dial-A-Ride, and we're, and the Dial-A-Ride is part of our Medicaid contract. So it's people that are on Medicaid, Medicaid pays us a rate for doing those trips. They call an order and schedule those. But we're not just running somebody to shopping in the Dows or whatever on Dial-A-Ride. It's, we're doing medical, but our radius is, is very large. The Dial-A-Ride service, we, because many of the specialists, medical specialists that are out of the area. So we go Yakima, Tri-Cities, east is the distance. We do regular rides there, very frequent rides to the Dows and Hood River, and then also Portland and Vancouver, because we've got the VA Medical Centers as well as a number of, you know, and there's a lot of Medicaid providers, like for dental, that aren't in Clickatuck County and people have to go out, you know. So, so we're regularly going to Portland, Vancouver, Dows, Hood River, Yakima, Tri-Cities. So Dial-A-Ride has a very big service area, and it is, so mileage-wise, we put a lot of, of miles on. But we also, that's why we use ADA minivans when able. We do have the mini buses have to be used for some people because of the type of wheelchair. They're in some of the larger electric ones. So there's a number of factors that go into that, but, and then again, that focus and primary is those essential services that people are accessing. So during COVID, we also had to do restrictions on the Dial-A-Ride because we couldn't do shared trips, because, you know, currently we do, now that that's lifted, we do try to coordinate and combine folks, so and, and take them together to make it as efficient as possible. And we do have people that can get on with another ride, like if they did need to get to the Dows and we have, we have a ride going in because we're going in, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday for dialysis anyway. We can add another person easily onto that. So we do a lot of juggling and, and changing around to try, try be as efficient as possible. But it does not really, the fixed route isn't fully taking the place of Dial-A-Ride because the Dial-A-Ride is, a lot of people are more dependent on the actual physical assistance. We have wheelchair accessibility on the fixed route, but we don't have the level of, they, they have to get curbside, you know, at the stops, pick up versus Dial-A-Ride is we're going actually into a home and assisting somebody out and into the vehicle and into a, a medical facility. And the drivers go through special training for that, so.
So I'm also on the Aging and Disability Board, and I get to do my first meeting, and we'll talk about transportation there Friday too, for the Medicare/Medicaid patients. And I'd like to commit to working with Sharon and getting more information even for myself. And then I'll bring it back to the board too, and give you a little more dollars and cents about who we're serving and what our money is coming in and how that's applied.
You brought that, sounds like you got a yes on that one.
Perfect.
Any further questions or anything you need from us before we're done?
I think we're out of our time now.
Thank you so much for, for all this time, I really appreciate being able to, to, to give you this update and really appreciate your, your input, the comments, really thoughtful comments, and looking forward to working with Commissioner Zoller.
Good to see you too.
Perfect. Well, thank you both for your update and holler back at us if you need some.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, Sharon.
I'll come and see you.
We'll get together.
Yes. We'll set a time.
Okay.
Being that it's 11:34, anything needed for us before we break for lunch?
None here. I'd make a motion to adjourn for lunch.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second to adjourn for lunch, all those in favor of adjourning for lunch, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, we'll see you at 1 o'clock. All right, it is 1 o'clock, we will call the afternoon meeting of the Clickatuck County Commissioners to order. Let the record show that all three commissioners are present, we will open with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if everyone will please stand, if you will. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting agenda with two add-ons under new business, one, a video of Goldendale, and two, planning commission application.
And I can second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the business agenda with two add-ons, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. There are no commissioner meetings ready yet. So we will move into citizen comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to inform the board about your views on issues. This is not a time or place for dialogue or debate with the board members. If you'd like to have a conversation with any of the commissioners, please call or email that commissioner. At this point, I'd like to go over some ground rules that include the values and behavior that everyone will expect to adhere to if they choose to give testimony. Please be respectful, remember that people of goodwill can disagree with your perspective. Disagree without being disagreeable. Be civil, please do not engage in disruptive, discourteous, threatening, disparaging, or otherwise uncivil behavior. You will have up to three minutes to speak to ensure equal opportunity, the public comment, each person may only address the board one time. Lastly, please give your name and general location for the record at the start of your testimony. With that, we will always start in the room, does anybody have public comment in the room? There we go, please step forward and talk into the mic and make sure the little lights are green for me when you come over.
I got green lights.
There you go, green means go.
Who's running timer? You want me to?
You want to do it, you want me to do?
Thank you, my name is Chris Sattam, and I'm from the High Prairie area. And I've been talking to some other individuals in our area, and I'm just kind of curious, what is the board's view of trying to make Clickatuck County a constitutional county?
Sorry, taking notes. We don't respond right away, we'll, we come up with comments and then we answer at the end at 1:25. So if you're looking for answers to questions, you'll either have to wait to 1:25 or have comments.
Right, I'm just seeking your perspective, just like, would like to know.
Would you like to give us your perspective?
Given the tenor of the times and seeing everything that is transpiring west of the Cascades, I mean, all politics is local, Tip O'Neill taught us that. It would seem to me that if we are trying to become an oasis of common sense, that it would be prudent to, to look back at what our founding fathers had done with the development of the Constitution and also with the Washington State Constitution, that I think it would be prudent for a full investigation for the possibility of having Clickatuck County become a constitutional county. So to pursue that, I would welcome your insight and your input, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, any citizen comment on Zoom land? Let me get, change my screen over, Gabrielle Gilbert, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I, I'm going to full out say that, that we are a constitutional republic and this constitutional county push is redundant and it, and its origins are suspicious at best. We are already living under a constitution, we don't need to declare it otherwise. We like to discuss that the Board of Health, that, that the board that is talking about the mental health buildup needs to be inclusive and diverse, and that you need to have those populations that are marginalized actually at the table and in the room when you're doing this build. I also want to say that childcare is infrastructure and requires the county to make it a priority. And then finally, to the commentary from the speaker last week that called me out, here is what I want to say, the state mandates that we protect and preserve wildlife, it's our resource. His lack of creative name-calling is really what is insulting. The 8,000 number that he speaks about concerning cougars in the state has no source unless it's coming out of his colon. The ban that was addressed in 1996 on hound hunting was a ballot initiative that 39 counties supported and said yes to. And the wildlife, you know, it's only saved by the posse's hound hunting, low success rate. But the county needs to determine what's your number on how many cougars you're going to kill and, you know, But the county needs to determine what's your number on how many cougars you're going to kill and, you know, because are you looking to eradicate them in the county? And you need to address this because it is, you know, we are, we have a state law that says we protect and preserve. And my farmer's daddy taught his daughter to stand up and clap back at nonsense. So right now I'm gonna go hug my pets because they're adorable and I love them. Thank you for your time and I appreciate it. Bye.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Gilbert. Back in the room, anybody have citizen comment? Seeing none right now. Let's go back online. Anybody else on the line have a citizen comment? Not seeing any. Two speakers and already very diverse opinions. All right, come on forward. Name and general location for the record.
It can't be confrontational.
Ideally, no. It doesn't, it doesn't usually
My name is Gene Ziderkoff. I live on Schilling Road in High Prairie. And I want to congratulate Lori on her recent election. And it's the first time I've had an opportunity to come in and actually meet yourself, Dan and Jacob. So that's part of the reason for being here, just to kind of see and get a feel, check out our new building.
Welcome, sir.
Yeah, so. I could restate Chris's question and kind of take offense to someone saying it's being redundant because it's not. The point of being constitutional is that illegal mandates from our governor that we were all forced to adhere to if we're against the constitution of this country. And as a constitutional county, we could have respectfully not conformed and still been within our rights. So that I don't believe has been addressed before from my knowledge. So that's just restating Chris here a little bit and some, a group of folks that we know as well. And just to come off the wall a little bit, is there any plans in the next 20 years to do anything with DOWs Mountain Road to improve it a little? Just a curiosity. It'd be a real shortcut for us to be able to use that to go to the DOWs or wherever, instead of going all the way to Lisle over and then all the way back and somewhere to here. You guys gotta go to Biggs and Cutover. And I think that's it. Thank you for this opportunity.
Can I ask one clerical question so I know how to respond?
Sure.
You said that we could have not conformed to mandates. What, what particular, I mean, there was many mandates.
I'm talking about the mask mandate in particular. I don't want to get into the other subject because it's so touchy. I just don't want to do that.
Thank you.
But mostly masks. That was just the tip of the iceberg. That's a, it's like anything. You gotta get your foot in the door. And from then on, you know, so. I'm just voicing that.
Yep.
Probably not correctly, but that's the best I can do.
Well, I just, I needed more
Yeah.
direction.
I agree.
So.
You need a little more focus there. Yeah.
Is that all you have? Or you have anything else for us?
Nothing other than it's a wonderful day out.
It's almost looking like spring out there. Don't say that. I'd have to like mow and do weed year work and perth house.
No, 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 I didn't want to go that far.
We're not ready for that.
Oh, yeah. No, no, no. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go back into internet land. Anybody else have public comment out there in internet land? Forty-eight viewers, so somebody's got to have something to say. Anything related to something that pertains to this county? I'm gonna start calling names just randomly. Nobody thinks I'm a threat there. You're probably right. Back in the room, anybody in the room? Come forward, sir. Name and general location for the record.
Greg Wagner with C's. Mr. Anderson, I've told you multiple times that due to your operating an unpermitted short-term rental and the conflict of interest that it creates, that you should recuse yourself from any involvement and decision-making on short-term rentals. You have refused to recuse yourself and continue to make decisions on short-term rentals that benefit you. You cannot render a fair and impartial decision and this is a violation of the state law and your oath of office. Your oath of office is to uphold the laws. There is an existing process to obtain a conditional use permit for a short-term rental. On January 12th, 2023, Mochi Lindblad told you that short-term rentals require a conditional use permit, but you refuse to trust the process and obtain one, the same process that you tell citizens to trust. On January 2nd, 2023, you helped make the decision to end investigations on short-term rental complaints. You have two complaints filed against your short-term rental. Your decision directly benefited you. This is unethical behavior. On October 6th, 2022, in the minutes of the commissioners' meeting, Commissioner Christopher indicated the board will be discussing short-term rentals soon and suggested that Chairman Anderson should not be part of the discussion. So the chairman, Commissioner Anderson agrees with my opinion that you should have nothing to do with short-term rental decisions and should recuse yourself. Chairman Anderson, he replied to Mr. Christopher's and disagreed and stated this matter should be going to the Planning Commission for interpretation of current code. But that is not what happened. It is now going to be decided by prosecuting attorney, Mr. Cannell. Why isn't this going before the Planning Commission as you stated, Mr. Anderson? Are you afraid that you won't get the results you want from nine citizens? You talk about citizen involvement. Why not with the decision concerning you? You told us we all must play by the same rules, but you don't play by the same rules. It's time for you to recuse yourself from any involvement with code complaints, short-term rentals, and conditional use permit decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. We will go back online. Anybody online have citizen comment? Sheri, see your hand raised. Name and location for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. This is Sheri Huesum. And I would like to agree with Mr. Wagner. Mr. Anderson, Commissioner Anderson, you have been renting a short-term rental out of your primary residence for unknown years. This was discovered when the underage alcohol party for minors was hosted in your Airbnb at your primary residence. Two co-complaints have been filed against your unpermitted short-term rental. I agree that you need to recuse yourself from making decisions against anybody else's co-compliance or their conditional use permit. This is ethical behavior and appearance of fairness. You gain profit, financial profit from running your business and by you making decisions on a short-term rental ordinance will only gain your, or will only affect your business profit. I believe that is against state law for you to, as a public official, to be making decisions on an ordinance that affects your financial gain. To the two other commissioners, I hope that you ethically see this as a fairness of fairness. On the Thursday workshop, January 12th, you decided not to go with the planning directors. County, it's, it's the county process. And I was told when I asked if I could run a short-term rental out of my primary residence, I would need to obtain a conditional use permit. This is in writing. This has been verbally stated in front of you. And for you to ignore the current county procedure and to allow Mr. Commissioner Anderson to continue to have say in the ordinances is unethical. And for you to continue to turn a blind eye to short-term rentals that do not have a conditional use permit at this time with code complaints for operation is that, I believe is unethical as well. Our county does have a process. And until you write ordinances that further dictate short-term rentals, you must obey by that process. And I'm very disappointed that we have continued on down this line of not dealing with co-compliance. You have, the county commissioners have taken responsibility for the co-compliance officer and you have decisions to make going forward. And maybe the short-term rental ordinance does need to go in front of the planning commission. I don't agree that the prosecuting attorney should have been the one appointed to write those ordinances for our county. So I would like you to reevaluate the current situation. Unfortunately, as it is, we do have a situation here and I hope that you ethically abide. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buske. We'll go back in the room. Anybody in the room have citizen comment? I'm seeing none. We'll go back online. Lynn Mason.
Thank you, commissioners, for your time today and listening to my comments. First of all, I'd like to ask the commissioners to comment on the status of the animal shelter. I haven't heard any updates and it's going on a year since the sheriff's department received $670,000 for an animal shelter that is direly needed in Clickatatt County and in Goldendale. So I'd really like to know how that's progressing. I'd like to also comment on some cougar numbers that were stated last week and I think Ms. Gilbert talked about. The fellow last week said that there's 8,000 cougars in the state and that is untrue. WDFW actually just did a presentation to the Senate Committee and their number is 2,300 in the whole state. So that's coming from scientists that actually study cougars. And I would like to comment about the proposals to become a constitutional county. If that's ever considered or brought before the commissioners, I would strongly suggest that you not go in that direction. If you do any background into the constitutional county movement that comes from an outside organization based in Arizona that is the opposite of local control, which I think that everyone in these rural counties stands for. I don't think we want our agenda set by an organization that's not in Clickatatt County. So I would strongly urge you against that. We saw in the election, the money and influence pouring into the county from this outside organization to to get one of their own elected. And I feel that we should be setting our own agendas for what's important in our county and not have outside organizations or influence telling us that. And if we join the CSPOA, Constitutional County Movement, that's what would happen. So thank you for your time today. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. We got time. We'll go back in the room. Anybody else in the room have citizen comment? Now's your time. Come forward. Please state your name and general location for the record to the end of the mic so everybody on the internet can hear you. Yep.
Yeah, my name is John Parr. And I was just listening to this lady's comment. I would dispute the issue of a constitutional county coming from another group in Arizona. That sounds a little far-fetched to me. But what I do know is there is a large faction of Clickatatt County people that are concerned about a constitutional county. And they do have some real concerns. And I think eventually this question is going to come up again in front of the commissioners. And I would seriously think that the commissioner should take some notice because this direction is building. I, I think that's about all I have to say right at the moment. If anybody else would like to make a comment, you can dispute my words if you want to. But this is a real issue and I do believe it is building within the county. That's all I have to say.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Parr. You didn't give us your general location where you reside in the county. Can you, for the record?
I live not too far from Schilling Road.
Schilling Road area. Got it. Thank you, sir. All right, we'll go back online. I see Tracy has her hand up. Go ahead, Tracy. Name and general location for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Tracy McCune and I am in Lisle, Washington. And my comment today has to do with our addressing system in Lisle. We have none. So I live on Clickatatt Street, which we have a Clickatatt Avenue in Murdoch. If you look on the interactive maps that the, the planning office put out, there's five addresses with, with my address on Clickatatt Street. Three of them have street, two of them have avenue, and none of them are actually my house. I brought this up to the Public Works Department and I brought this up to the planning department multiple times over the last couple of years and it hasn't been fixed. So I found an ordinance that, that, let's see. I found an ordinance that says it was in volume 10, let's see, no, code 10986, volume 41, page 219. I'll repeat that. Code 10986, volume 41, page 219. And it says adopts permanent county addressing systems and maps for the rural Lisle, High Prairie and Appleton area. It was repealed in 2016 by ordinance 102797-0-1. I'll repeat that. Ordinance 102797-1. And the, the new ordinance is Federals, State, Federal and Local Coordination Plan. And if you read through that, it, it gives the, the coordination of, of things to local agencies, entities and state and federal departments. And you have bypassed the addressing system for our rural areas. I asked the commissioners to go back to that original code, 10986, volume 41, page 219, and fix our, our Lisle problem with our addresses. I am at, at now, right now, I just got a, a a certified letter saying that I owe money on, on something that was opened on the Clickatatt Avenue address, not my Clickatatt Street with my name and social security number. And I never opened that, that account. So this matter needs to be fixed immediately.
Thank you, Ms. McCune. I have a quick question for you. You're saying is the, is the, is the problem between address and driver? Are you saying there's five different people that have the address 250 Clickatatt Avenue, that, that the actual 250 is used five times? Are you just saying there's some people use drive and some people use avenue?
I'm saying that, that my address, 421 Clickatatt Street, there are three 421 Clickatatt Streets and two 421 Clickatatt Avenues on the interactive map. And there are none of them show my, my house, but they're all in the Lisle and Murdoch area.
Interesting.
Now, if you look at the fire department, which is 514 Washington Street, you will also see there are five different addresses with 514, none of them being the fire department, one being on Fifth and Washington.
Thank you, ma'am. You gave me the clarification. I need to do some research.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it. We'll go back in the room one more time. Any citizen comment before we start answering the questions? Seeing none. So do either one of my seatmates want to start off with answering the questions?
Go ahead.
Got a whole line. You're both pointing at each other while you're typing notes still. Okay, make sure your mic is on and you're close enough to it for everybody to hear. Okay, make sure your mic is on and you're close enough to it for everybody to hear.
So for, we had several people today talk about the constitutional county. That was something that came up during the election time. I've learned a little bit more. It's a little bit of a hard process for me to think about because I am a constitutionalist, and I believe in our state and federal constitution. And I know our county adheres to it and runs our county by it. So that's more thought process for me. How do we make that statement? You know, how do we declare something that you've heard from other people even, and not in opposition, but from Gabby and another lady, that we all are constitutionalists, and we believe in that? So how do we, from my view, how do we put that together and make that a public statement? That we might have some kind of public statement for our county that way. I don't see how we would ever pass a policy or ordinance for something like that. I don't think it's necessary. We all swear to do it anyhow when we're here working, so, and when you live here. And thank you for following through on the animal shelter question. We did have, Lynn, we did have conversations about that money last week with the Sheriff Department, and they're working on it. They're moving forward and going to come back to us with more information and brought in a lot of reasons why we needed to have that last week. So they're still working on that, but it does have movement. It isn't just languishing. And the county mapping system, I have questions about it, too. So we'll follow through with those county mappings questions, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zola. Commissioner Anderson?
I'm still doing some research, if you want to go.
I can. Oh, can I take these in order? The constitutional county thing. I'm a constitutionalist. I'm going to follow the Constitution, both state and federal. We're a constitutional county already because we have to follow the state and the federal constitution, or we're thrown out of office. I understand the citizenry would like to have that memorialized on a piece of paper. And I'm not adamantly opposed to that. I am adamantly opposed to the wording that I've seen that goes a little above and beyond and starts giving powers to people that don't have those powers under the current constitution. But if all the people are looking for is a policy statement that, at least I can only speak for myself, that I will abide by the Constitution, follow the Constitution, and continue to push forward and defend the Constitution against all enemies, foreign and domestic, the answer is, hell, yeah, I'll sign it. When you start throwing other little things on there, that's where it becomes a little more sticky widgety because it becomes political. I don't think anybody, Democrat or Republican, can be against signing a document that the three leaders of this county are going to follow the Constitution. And if they have a problem with signing a simple document like that, then they probably got a problem with the country. But it would need to be a short memorialized document that says just that and not all the policy statement and political rhetoric that would be in that. But that's where I'm at on that. Dallas Mountain Road, I understand the concerns. When I took office, I had a lot of the same concerns because the road had not been maintained for some time because, under that administration, it didn't want to be maintained. So I had complaints from law enforcement that the rocks were literally knocking mufflers off the car. Since then, I believe the county has done a little more work and graded and fixed some of those problems, but some of the problems would now resort into blasting, which would become a big expensive project that would need to end up going on the six-year transportation plan. We have those hearings every fall if people would like to come and testify to put a road on the six-year transportation plan. Keep an eye out for those public hearings because that's where we would focus on where we're going to spend dollars going for the next six years. So I think you're going to see ongoing maintenance, just not, you know, nice gravel and pavement. To Ms. Bosque, saying that we choose what codes and laws that we choose not to enforce, that we shouldn't be allowed to do that. I think this county has spoke clearly during the last election that it believes that its elected officials should be able to choose which laws and which codes it doesn't want to enforce. So if currently we are working on a short-term rental legalization policy, why would I want to attack one person or the other 500 people that are currently doing it for political purposes when we're going to change the rule in a month? That's why nothing has happened on this, and that's why this board and passports haven't done anything, is because they planned on changing the rule. And I will not weaponize our county code to go after an individual that somebody doesn't like. Where's that one? Animal shelter got answered. It's being run by the sheriff, and he's setting up a subcommittee that's going to look into costs and whatnot and then report back to us. We don't know much further. Constitution County. Ms. McCune, I'll look into the address thing. That's a whole new thing to me, so I need to do some research, and so I can't really answer your question, but thank you bringing it to our attention. And that's all I have. Go ahead, Mr. Anderson. Sorry, I took a long time there.
You did a great job. And Tracy, I have full faith that our chairman will look into the addressing and will be able to get the answers for you. I'm going to let him take that one on, so thank you. Thank you. When it comes to the Sheriff's Department and the animal shelter, the county has offered to use its own property, so the county will be stepping into that using our own assets as match for that, so long as they can make a good business case that the animal shelter is not going to be another, in essence, unfunded mandate that comes down. With regards to the constitutional county, wow. I just saw that sign when I was driving into town this morning, and I said, oh, that hasn't come up in a long time.
You're on the other side of the county.
Well, we still got the signs, and I drive through every day. Now, with regards to the constitutional county, I'm doing just a little bit of research here, trying to get back to it. And what, I think what I heard from one of the speakers was is that the, this organization in Arizona, and that's the American Police Officers Alliance, is one of them that pushes the constitutional counties, and I think there's another couple others. There's also an organization called the Constitutional County, which is new to me. And I'm not going to read out, but if anybody wants to just do some research on it, I firmly agree with what Commissioner Christopher says, as well as what my seatmate, Commissioner Zoller says. Clickatet County is and always has been a constitutional county. We uphold the laws. We all believe firmly in the state and federal constitution. When it comes to things like the mask mandate or that other mandate, and we all seem to have been operating during those two years under a lot of duress. And I know that's what, you know, that's the big push. What I like to point to is that it was the state. It was the state that gave, the state legislature gave the governor pretty much unlimited emergency powers, when that is called. That was the state legislature that passed those laws. Those are laws. And when a law is passed in Washington State, it is deemed constitutional until a court of, the Supreme Court of the state can declare that unconstitutional. So when something gets passed, we have to assume that it's constitutional. We have to operate as such. We don't have the ability to sit here as judge, jury, and executioner of saying what is or is not constitutional. We can have our own opinions, and we definitely did and said that during that time where we were all locked down and shut down. The constitutional, declaring yourself a constitutional county, as I think Commissioner Christopher pointed out, that has its own meaning, and that has its own definition. And that might be different than per se us and our following of just the Constitution and the laws that are passed. Now, when it comes to like the mask mandate, for example, and everyone's saying that's unconstitutional. Well, if you were to ask me, it would have been absolutely, I believe it. But I can't say that as the elected official of the county, one of the elected officials of the county. I can say that personally. Now, we have three branches of government for a reason, and it is one branch of government that we're not in, and that's a judicial branch that can determine what is and is not constitutional. And just because the legislature is willing to give away their power, their legislative authority and their powers to the governor, doesn't give us the right to say whether that's constitutional or not. And whether that governor chooses to use those powers, and we're the ones that have to either implement it, or, as I think we did at that time, do everything we can to not have to implement it. The county, we did not fire anyone for not being vaccinated. We did not go after anyone that did not wear a mask in the offices. We didn't fire anyone for not wearing masks. We try to do, especially in touchy subjects like that, we try not to shout from the rooftops when it comes to it.
I agree.
We try to do what we can to protect our employees and our citizens without bringing down the heavy hand of the state government because we don't have control over what Labor and Industries does, we don't have control over what the state police do. But sometimes the best thing you can do is, as this sheet in front of Commissioner Christopher says, keep your mouth shut.
It says, never miss a good opportunity to shut up.
And so that's kind of where we were at during that time, and I hope that helps you understand our thinking during those times where, at least, I think, I'm speaking for myself, but I saw Commissioner Christopher nodding that, you know, it's not that we were trying to say we're not constitutional, we don't believe in the Constitution. It's that, that when there are laws that are passed and there you have a whole lot of bureaucracy and government above you pushing down, you do what you can.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I do want to make two more comments. I know we're running way late. And she's got one more, too. I think Commissioner Anderson is right. There's times to push back on your soapbox and say it loud and proud, but when you do that, you bring government attention. You bring the state on you, they start pulling your grants, they start affecting your people. If you push back quietly, and just like me, I went two years without ever telling someone they had to put a mask on. I never told anybody they had to put a mask on, ever. Never enforced it quietly. It kept the state out of our business. There were no fines, there were no grants, they were not capitalized or not sent to us. It's just the quiet approach. It was the same approach, just the quiet approach. But I would also agree with Commissioner Anderson that eventually it's the courts that will decide because we have a difference of opinion. You walked in the door today, and there's a sign on the door that talks about no open carry of firearms in the building, which was a new law passed by the legislature last year. My interpretation of that law, that means inside this room, when there's a public hearing or a public meeting taking place, the rest of the room, in my interpretation of that law, is off limits from that sign. I obviously have a different interpretation for the law than the person that put up the sign. The sign came from the judge. So he's obviously got a different interpretation or wants to go a different way about it than I do. And can I put up a fight? Sure. Take it all the way to Supreme Court and spend taxpayer money, or I can just keep my gun under my jacket? I'll live with the gun under my jacket. Let somebody else spend the money on that court fight for, you know, $300,000 if they want to. So those are the two things I have, Ms. Zoller. Go ahead.
I just wanted to address short-term rentals really quick. That didn't get past me. I can say we made leaps and bounds last week with that document, which we had a document preformed that went back to the prosecutor. That's his job to trim through that document and make sure we meet the intent of the law at the state process so that we can get it on our books as an ordinance, and then we can move through managing those short-term rentals the way we need to do. And I was happy that he took that on. That's where that needs to be. It's already been defined. If it were just in the beginning processes, it would go to Planning Commission, but it's more in the final processes. So once the prosecutor gets done with that, we can move on with short-term rental. And he set a timeframe, I believe, of 30 to 45 days to have that done. So that was a good, good thing.
Commissioner Christopher? Can I fix one?
20 seconds. I just realized we have Commissioner Janiky scheduled at 1:30, and if I'd have remembered that, I would have never taken a citizen comment longer than 1:30. So I want to apologize to her, but if you get 10-second comment, make it.
Just wanted to clarify one thing. Factually, we did require masks in our commissioner meetings during the time when we were required to wear masks in the meeting. So we were following those rules because we did not want to get crosswise of the governor and the police.
The masks were mandatory in the library also.
We don't have control of the libraries.
Yes, not us. All right, thank everybody for their comment. I especially thank the new people for their comment. It's always good to hear what the people out there are thinking. With that, we will move forward. No public meetings, public bid openings, so we will move forward to Skagit County Commissioner Lisa Janiky with a presentation and discussion regarding strategic planning. And I once again want to apologize to Commissioner Janiky for not being on schedule and being conservative with your time.
It's no worries. You certainly don't have to apologize to me. I've been in lots of public meetings, and we, and the most important thing is to hear from the public. So is it, I, I'm assuming that I have the ability to share screen? Is it okay to give that a try?
Yes, go ahead.
It's a risky proposition. Let's see if we can pull up that PowerPoint that was shared with you last week. Are you able to see that?
Yes, we are.
PowerPoint. Wonderful. It's modern miracle.
Right?
Anyway, yeah, it's a small success. My name's Lisa Janiky, and I am on the Board of County Commissioners, and I want to thank particularly Commissioner Zoller for talking through and about strategic planning when we were at the newly-elected training back in December. I really appreciate the invitation to be here today, and I will talk fast so we can get you guys back on schedule, although I'm happy to answer questions as we go through this. So Skagit County, just for a frame of reference, sometimes I call us the Goldilocks-sized county. We're not too big, we're not too small, at 130,000 or so in population. We are sandwiched between two much larger counties and, of course, in close proximity to the, to the big counties there down around Puget Sound. Our general fund budget is about $65 million, and we have four incorporated cities and then four smaller towns. So just kind of an idea of who all we, we work with and work for. My, my background is financial before I ran for public office. I'm just starting a third term, so I've been in office for eight years. And my background was as the chief financial officer for a family, family businesses that range from forestry to engineering to aerospace and defense manufacturing. And when I left to run for public office, the businesses combined for about 550 employees, and they're now, now are over 900 employees in Skagit County. So just to kind of give a frame of reference of where I come from, because in, in growing family business, the, and as the holder of the purse strings, you know, my goal was always to inspire the vision so that we could fund the good ideas. And I said that was my goal, or my job, was to fund the good ideas of my husband, his brothers, brothers-in-law. And I, and I think the same thing is true in, in government. Sometimes we get so wrapped around that all, that everything that is happening in so many different directions that we, we don't always take that time to inspire the vision of what it is that we want to do in the long run. And, you know, and I have said that my, my goal is to put systems and plans in place that far outlive- that far outlive my term in office. And, you know, because every four years, as you all know, we are at the... It's at the discretion of the voters whether we get to continue our jobs. But at least we know that we're funding the right things when we're in office. So we talked about a strategic plan. Strategic planning had not been done regularly in Skagit County. And so, given the opportunity that our post-COVID, you know, social environment gave us and some of that ARPA funding that came through that could jumpstart project, it just seemed like a really good idea to kind of reset what our plan is. So we went out for a bid. And our goal, this was last year in 2022, and so the goal was to coordinate our timeline in a way that we would be completed with what our priorities are to impact what the budget cycle is for our county. So our department, as they're putting together their budget request in August, we wanted to have this strategic planning process done by June 30th so that how do your programs tie out to the strategic goals? What is, you know, what programs are you currently doing that may not be necessary versus those that are mandated? Versus, you know, how can we immediately impact what we are doing with having a timely strategic plan in place? And so, you know, I didn't even think a six-month project timeline was possible. But we did, we worked with a consultant who was based out of, actually, Colorado. And it was not only possible, but I think it was done really well. I'm going to talk about the who. You know, there's a lot of things on this particular timeline. And a lot of it is, I mean, one amazing part is this two-day strategic plan retreat I'll talk about with the who was involved. So we really wanted a high-level engagement. The last time a strategic plan had been done in Skagit County, it was really a staff-driven document that had taken place over multiple, or had background in multiple years, but was really written by staff and then adopted by the commissioners. And so there wasn't the buy-in that really made it an effective document. So this strategic planning process was completely commissioner-led with a staff person out of our office. The department heads and other elected officials were great about participating. We had multiple surveys and questions and opportunities for our employees to give feedback. And then those cities and towns, you know, four cities and four towns, we actively solicited feedback from the folks in government who we work with. And then, of course, getting community feedback. So active solicitation of getting the feedback through a process of interviews. The consultant did hour-long interviews that were very, you know, what does the county do well? What does, where does the county need to really step forward? Where are the opportunities you see? Where are... I mean, just, there was, you gotta have thick skin when you read all those, you know, literally, there were hundreds of pages of interview results. And I think people were really honest. Our employees, the surveys that were sent out to the employees had a 40% participation rate is, you know, usually when we send out surveys, we're lucky to get, you know, a couple hundred people who respond out of the whole community. And we were getting... We have about just under 700 employees in the county. And so to get a 40% participation rate just out of our employee base was really fabulous. Some people don't like surveys. They don't want that, you know, they don't want to be anonymous. They want to talk about things. So there were also some focus groups where folks were invited to talk about where the opportunities are in the county and where we were perhaps not spending our time as well as, you know, and time and resources as well as we could. And then on that timeline, there was a two-day retreat. And that two-day retreat was what really both surprised me. And anyway, there were 45 department heads and other electeds who attended, including some of our judges. You're talking about the judicial branch. And a lot of times, I mean, talk about their schedules and their, you know, ability to really control their own environment. But we had a district court and a superior court judge. And our prosecutor was there, too. But a two-day retreat with going through this process of really inward evaluation and outward evaluation of how our resources are utilized and what it is that we're accomplishing. And, you know, it was that thing of lots of post-notes and, you know, and discernment. And then in the end, the commissioners in front of this whole group of electeds had to go up and sort out our priorities based on the inputs from all these folks. And from it came, you know, some of these things are very typical in a strategic planning process, establishing what our values are and being able, you know, to talk about our, you know, highest priorities, what are deeply-held beliefs, you know, and what really drives us as Skagit County. And we really look at it as the heart of what our organization is and what our employees stand for in this world. So it's the why we do what we do. Vision and mission, sometimes that, you know, some of you have been probably through strategic planning process with other organizations. And, you know, that can eat up a half a day of just going through that. But there was a pretty quick and distilled process for coming up with words that described it. And then it was assigned off to some small work groups to come up with actual language that came back on the second day of retreat. And we worked through that. So it was part of it, but it certainly didn't dominate the conversation. Because, you know, I come from a place where I just want to, I want to build stuff. I want to, you know, have programming that works. I want to see results, you know, sooner than later. I am impatient in that. And really, that comes, I think, coming out of the private sector on, you know, you don't, we didn't have the time that some places have. But for some entities will take to plan things. We like, in private sector, we like to move fast into that. And I like to move fast, too. Sometimes even faster than my fellow commissioners. Part of the process of that two-days-a-retreat is what we came up with what we call our key focus areas. And this was the result of, you know, that sorting through, you know, what are those things that, you know, you want to see the commissioners doing? It's, I call it the post-it note exercise. So where there were broad categories and everybody who participated would put forth ideas. And like my parks director was there. And he wanted to make sure that green infrastructure was part of the, you know, long-range plan, the strategic plan as part of our health and community responsiveness. And I'll tell you, it was good that he was there because I don't know about in your particular budget, but in our world, law and justice is about three-quarters of our budget. And the presence of, you know, our judges, our prosecutor, and our sheriff was there, public defender was there. There are always lots of really good ideas that could, without some constraint, grow our law and justice commitment even more broadly. But being able to hear from everyone, and when it came right down to the end and we had to prioritize the key focus areas, the, our work, the county workforce came out as the top of that. Because if the customer service part of county isn't being done, if we're not responsive and able to keep or and attract good employees, then we can't do any of the work that we're doing in the county. And it came out that our methodology of just being, working in our own separate spaces, we were so siloed. People who had worked for the county for 20 years, when they got together and got their 20-year pins, didn't even know each other if they were in different departments. And so being able to cross-train and have, you know, folks from Public Works really understand some of what, where the touchpoints are in permitting and planning or, you know, in environmental health. And so we have become, we have created an intentionality around particularly the key focus area of an engaged workforce. So that the idea that someone who, you know, comes from the community and asks for, well, just name it, they want something done, they don't know, they don't know who to contact. So they might call Public Works when it's really a planning issue. But, you know, to most of our folks, it's just the county. They talk to the county, and the county should know. And in order for that to happen, our county employees have to also know who to reach out to. So we focus a lot on county connect now. We have some social interactions that are either before work, after work, or during lunch hour. We have informational presentations that are on Zoom that are 30 or 45 minutes long. And just being very intentional about cross-training. And we are also engaged with, we've engaged our employees in these key focus areas to help carry the goals and objectives for establishing the SMART goals. And some of that means that they do a, you know, offering a tour. I think our first tour that we're going to have sign-ups for is to go out to the transfer station and see what happens out there. You know, a lot of people have, you know, dropped off their stuff at the transfer bins, but they don't necessarily know what the process is beyond that. And so, anyway, that engagement piece. Our other key focus areas, they're broad. Critical and sustainable infrastructure. I don't know about you guys, but we thought some buildings, our courthouse, turned 100 years old. And what do we do to put maintenance plans in place so that we don't lose some of our critical infrastructure? And how, on this side of the mountains, how do we retrofit for seismic activity and keep our 100-year-old courthouse, you know, still operational with today's plan? So that is part of the, part of the goals that come through that key focus area. Our key focus areas, so there's goals, and then there's SMART objectives that give both dates and have measurable outcomes. And when we went to, we've gotten great buy-in from the employees. When we asked for committee leads on these key focus areas so that there could be quarterly reporting back to the public in front of the Board of Commissioners, we got more people than we had key focus areas. So we had a really great responsiveness to carrying forward with showing our progress on strategic goals. Which, you know, it was really, we all have seen it happen where a study or a body of work is done and it literally sits on the shelf. And it, and we, you know, nobody wants to have to pay for a plan that then never gets operationalized. So the ability to operationalize it with some of our employees leaning in to lead the process was really essential and has carried us going forward. So we get to see the red, yellow, green stop sign chart of where we are against certain goals. So we're talking about the key focus area leaderships, working on our strategies for achieving these goals, and then the measurement and success to adapt as we go forward. And so this is what the document actually looks like. The link for it is there on the bottom. And while it summarizes that body of work that was really done and gives the outline of, you know, what our key focus areas are. I think the most important part of what we are doing and how we are doing it is how engaged our employees have been on actually working through the, you know, they want to be able to check things off the list and see that it happens. And if it's not happening, you know, in the timeframe, to be able to, you know, push on us as commissioners, to push on others who may have influence in their facilities goals, and to make sure that we keep moving forward and that this little booklet document doesn't just sit in some electronic bookshelf somewhere and not get used. So there is the, there's that website link for the actual strategic plan document. And I am going to stop sharing and turn it back to you, see if there's any questions perhaps that I could answer.
Questions, Ms. Soller? This is...
I have no questions. But I just wanted to say thank you right now, just in case you get away from me. I appreciate your time.
Okay, Mr. Anderson. Questions this early in the game?
So Lisa, I'm looking at your strategic plan online and your goals, your strategic goal. And then it looks like, you know, underneath your goal, you have the actual deliverables. Before you guys went through this, did you have any of these deliverables anywhere together? Or was it just kind of, you're just working on them? Was it ever in one document?
So this, this was never in, this was never in one document. The, in fact, I referred to a strategic plan that had been adopted early in my first term. It was something that staff had put together after kind of a prolonged period of gathering feedback internally. But it was so, that particular plan was so broad. It had so many things that there wasn't a condensed way of accomplishing any particular thing. So coming up with what our focus areas were and then particular goals with it. The goals that are in the published strategic plan were then fleshed out with work groups after our consultant was done so that they're the ones who actually came up, the work groups are the ones that actually came up with the particular goals that were SMART goals, measurable, and had timelines associated with it. So we have expanded beyond this. That is in a way that is specific for Skagit County.
Lisa, I have a question. This is Commissioner Christopher. Do you have an idea that you can give us on the budgetary cost for the consultant to do this project for your county? Understanding your county is a little bigger, more employees and all that kind of stuff. But just kind of get in the ballpark.
The initial contract was $70,000. I don't know if there may have been a slight, $70,000 to $75,000 with the consultancy.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions for the commissioner? Seeing none, I want to thank you for your presentation. I knew very little about strategic planning. And I know a little bit more now, but I'm still just knowing enough to be dangerous. So I need to do a little more research. And then look into this a little better on our county level. But I do appreciate your update for us. It definitely helped me out.
Well, I appreciate your time and getting to share that story. And I tell you, the best part that comes out of it is that when someone comes forward with a new idea and they say, hey, this is a great idea. And I'm like, how does that align with our strategic plan? How is that going to help us accomplish which of the goals? And they've been super responsive. You know, department heads and employees have been really responsive to aligning, you know... you know, the, what it is that we're doing with what we said we wanted to do. So, we're rowing together a lot better than we were before.
Good. That's kind of the purpose, I think, so. Alrighty, thank you ma'am. I will see you up at the Olympia Legis steering committee next week, I'm sure. So I will let you get back to doing whatever you were doing. And thank you ma'am again.
Thank you so much. Bye-bye now.
Bye-bye. That was interesting. I, I had trouble getting over the, they have 130,000 people and their budget isn't that much bigger than ours.
That's their general fund budget, so.
That's true, ours is combined, so it's double ours.
Well, no, our general fund's only 18.
Well, when you put grants in there, it's bigger than that.
No, our general fund, not our, our total budget's 60 million, but our general fund's 18, 19.
That and the law adjustment, justice is three-quarters of percent of their budget, which is well more than ours. It was interesting. The cost is scary, at least for them. They have family or employees and 45 people attending their little mini-conference.
Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to recess the board, the Clickatet County Board of County Commissioners meeting to open the Board of Health meeting.
I would second.
All right, we have a motion to recess the Clickatet County Commissioner meeting so that we can open the Board of Health meeting. I will make a note that Commissioner Anderson, I believe, is still Chair of the Board of Health. So he would be needing to take over. All those in favor of recessing the BOCC meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Are you sure? Huh? Oh, that's right. All right, meeting canceled. There's no chairman to operate this thing. The vice chair is going to operate it until we get a vote, I guess, huh? Vice chair's out in the hall. Come on in, vice chair. You gotta run this shindig until we can elect new officers. The chairman's not here? You're next in line.
That was last year. I haven't seen your letter yet. Am I still on board?
Yes.
They'll show you're the chair.
He's like, wow, I don't know that I signed up for all this pressure.
There's no pressure. Everybody has an airway.
Right. Airway pulse, yeah. It's all yours, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to begin the Board of Health meeting for this date, 24th of January. All Board of Health members are here. Haven't met Commissioner Silver yet. And we'd like to begin with, I guess, approval of the agenda. Everybody have a chance to review those, the agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the business agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. It's been seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes and move on to the adoption of the minutes. Does everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Yes, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the minutes.
I would second the motion.
All right, the motion has been seconded to adopt the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And we'll move on to the election of officers.
So in accordance with RCW 70-05-040, every, at the first Board of Health, at the first local Board of Health meeting for the year, the member shall elect a chair to serve for a period of one year. Historically, we have elected a chair and a vice chair, but the RCW only asks that we have a chair. So you all can decide if you want a chair and a vice chair, or just elect a chair.
Doesn't matter to me either way. I mean, somebody can always step in being the acting chair if the chair can't be there, so.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to elect our current BOCC Chair, Dan Christopher, as Chair of the Board of Health for the year.
Okay, Dan Christopher's been nominated.
May I make second?
Care to second?
If you wanted to continue.
If you want to continue.
Forgot where I was.
That's all right.
Not that I necessarily want the nomination, but.
No, we're going to second that.
Okay, the nomination's been seconded. I guess we vote, and then there's a discussion?
Discussion and then vote.
Discussion, thank you.
Yeah, I, it's just been historical that the Chair is also the Chair of this. Last year, we did it a little bit different, but I think that's the exception to the rule. So I would, I would be in favor of going back to the rule and having the BOCC Chair be also the Chair of the Board of Health. Makes running the meetings a little easier. Sorry, lengthy discussion, my bad.
No, I just, thank you for your comments, your perspect, perception. Any other comments? Okay, let's put this recommendation or to vote. All those in favor of Dan Christopher being the Chair of the Board of Health, say aye.
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 Aye. Passes unanimously, and you're in, Commissioner Christopher.
Do you have a copy of the agenda? I cannot find it on my laptop anywhere. I've been scrolling, 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 and I can't see it. I don't like my mic.
I can hand you mine, and we can share. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, he's, he's going to find it eventually. I'm like 185 pages, and I'm trying to hit the little toolbar on the side, and I'm not getting there.
We can share, we're okay.
All right, so moving right along, we will go into Health Officer Discussion. Ms. Quinn, go ahead.
We had talked about, we're mostly going to postpone this discussion. We were going to talk about a potential interview this morning, so we're going to interview on Thursday. It is still the Board of Health that has to vote to make them the administrative officer. So at some point, we may do an email exchange about that, since today's the Board of Health, and we need to get the individual that we determined to be our Health Officer on board.
Can we do an email exchange without violating public meeting laws?
Yes. Done it before. With guidance from the appropriate folks.
Perfect, good answer.
Thank you. Hopefully, I'm not incorrect about that.
Just to double-check that.
I will. I, I have checked it in the past.
At least for these three of the members.
Yeah. No, there's a, I have done it, and I will follow up and make sure that's the same way in the future. But yes, so that was that whole discussion.
Make a motion, just so that we don't have to worry about it.
That would be wise, too.
Make a motion that we will go with the recommendation from the interview panel.
You all are the interview panel?
Right. But so long as the recommendation comes out of the meeting, then we wouldn't have to have another meeting.
Oh.
I, I guess technically you could make a motion to, for the Board of Health Officers to agree to the decision of the Board of Commissioners. Is that what you're trying to say?
No, the interview panel or...
Which is us.
Is everybody going to be there? Oh, okay. Now that makes it a little easier. I'll see if you can do it. If not, we can always call another Board of Health meeting.
Okay, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
But we have to advertise it, though.
We do.
Two, two weeks out.
Correct. I'll, I will work with the appropriate folks to figure it out.
Okay.
So that's all I had on that.
Okay.
That part.
Then we will move forward with approval and update of the 2023 clinical services fee schedule.
Yes, so this will look very similar to what you did in November. I imagine that we're going to be doing this every time we have a Board of Health from here on out. The specific change on this fee schedule is for one of our IUDs for birth control. The price went from $60 to $120. That covers all of the ones that we've purchased to date. We were told that the next time we purchase those, they will be $400 per. So we will, once we run out of the ones that we've purchased for that price, we will then do a subs. So about March, we'll end up asking to have that updated again. We have not seen this much of price fluctuations in our supplies in the past, so are keeping a really close eye on it. It just means there's going to be a little more administrative work.
Means there's going to be a baby boom coming in, in a little while.
I hope not. And then we'll also probably address the Paraguard, which is also an IUD. Currently, it's on the fee schedule for $290. That is not a change today. But the quoted price for the upcoming purchases is $1,000. So, so we'll be doing this again. Typically, this is a once-a-year process. I'm just telling you now, we'll probably talk about it a lot this year, so. Anyway, so I'm just asking, we do have to have a resolution any time we do change our fee schedules to remind that we are non-for-profit, and then just to have that passed.
I, I do have one question.
Yes.
And I came to the question after we talked, but is there only one, like, clearinghouse that you shop from? Is there only one place to get it? So you, you actually look for the lowest-priced items?
Yeah, we have a couple, there are a couple of things, and I can't tell you exactly what they are, that we can only get from one vendor. But for the most part, we have multiple clearinghouses that we, we do price checks. We do price checks, and we also look for updates, so making sure that when we purchase something, it doesn't expire the following month. Like, we look for things that have longer, so when we put them on our shelves, that we're not wasting anything.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yes, we actually do a really good job of.
Oh, and suddenly, one of them IUD things lasts, is it three months, or is it a year, or IUD, whatever it is?
Uh, it can be up to 10.
10 months?
Years.
10 years?
Yeah, seven to 10.
Oh, wow.
Some are in long.
Not recommended, but yes.
How effective? 99% probably?
I think 98, 99, yeah.
Interesting. All right, sorry, off-topic.
No, that's, that is what we were discussing.
I'm an, I'm an old man, you know, it, it, that stuff's new to me.
I also included just for your situational awareness, because I finished this last, or we put it together yesterday, just kind of how our fees work and the, the prices associated with them. So. Because we did talk a little bit about the sliding fee scale, so just a little bit more transparency on what that looks like for individuals. And those are the updated 2023 federal poverty guidelines for taking into consideration, which were released last week.
So, Mr. Chair, I make a motion to pass, to approve the current fee schedule?
All right, we have a motion to accept the proposed fee schedule. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the proposed fee schedule. Any comments?
So on your second page, Director Quinn, it says 19 years or older with income of 150 to 260 must first apply and be denied for Apple Health. So why, why is that, that you have to apply and be denied if you're going to be paying?
That's the partial fee.
Yep. And also, that's a state requirement.
Okay.
It's not something, that's not a, that's not a nice thing.
So it's one of them mandate things.
Thank you.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve the proposed fee schedule. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Moving on to the approval and waiver of food fees for nonprofits.
We covered this in November as well. You all had some extra additional homework that you had asked me to do around that. We did have the Prosecuting Attorney's Office review this paperwork. They did recommend that we do leave the 501(c)(3) language attached. They did not recommend that we make it more broad. The list of the 501, if you open it to 501, that literally means everyone. And the intent of this is for charitable work and fundraiser. Statistically, we feel like it will be probably in the, at this point, based on where we are seeing utilization, we think probably about five people per year will actually utilize this process, based on our past research. Typically, maybe church fundraisers. They're going to add some metrics tracking so that we can track per month how many times this is, this is utilized, so that if we get to the point where it's impacting revenue, we can revisit the... So that'll be on your Board of Commissioner update to see how many people utilize the waiver of food fees for nonprofit.
So is it actually a waiver of the fee? Or is it, we send out the bill and then they can, then we waive the bill?
It's a wave of the fee.
So now we can do that?
Depends on what week it is, apparently. I don't know. I'm still confused about exactly when the timeline occurs that we can waive the fee. So by law, we're allowed to waive fees. It's just a matter of can we waive the fee before they get the bill? Or can we waive the fee right off the bat and tell them that they were waiving the fee? Or do we have to wait till the fees assessed to be able to waive the fee? There's some legal definition there that we're, that's what we're debating.
I will follow up again on that. My understanding was that we could waive it. But I will follow up on that, before we implement that, if you all approve the resolution.
Yep. Yeah, I think there's no doubt that the fee will end up being waived. It's just at what point in the process can we legally waive it, is the question at hand. Okay, any other updates for food fees for nonprofits?
Nope.
Any questions? All right, hearing none, we will move into public access to the board. This is the time for the general public to ask Board of Health-related questions to the panel of the Board of Health and/or the public health director. Anybody in the room have a citizen comment for Board of Health? Anybody online have a citizen comment for the Board of Health? I see one. Sherry, this is citizen comment for the Board of Health and health-related issues.
Public health-related issues.
Public health-related issues. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you for asking for public input. I would like to know if the public health does cover mental health? And how is that going to be implemented in our county?
Public health and behavioral health are two very different departments, and the Board of Health does not oversee behavioral health, but we do behavioral health updates every five weeks for the Commissioners. Currently, we're providing crisis services only in the community, so, and through the coordination of law enforcement, the jail, and the hospitals.
We had a little update on that this morning before lunch, so when the video gets posted, you can go back and kind of watch that, and it'll give you a little more detail on the behavioral health stuff. Any other questions, comments for the Board of Health? Seeing none, going once, going twice? All right, last call. Public comment is now closed for the Board of Health. With that, is there any further business that any of the members have before we adjourn?
No.
Welcome. Fighting stuff, riveting. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourned the Board of Health meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Board of Health meeting is adjourned. We will take this time to reopen the Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Do you want your agenda back, ma'am, or? You get my scribbles next to it, too, because I have to, like, check myself off. Ms. Erin, future Board of Health meetings, can you print me one of those agendas and bring it for me? Because I'm, I'm kind of slow. He's print nothing. I just want an agenda, and I'm good.
I'm okay.
Yeah, just, just an agenda is all I care about. Right. Moving right along. Unfinished business. I guess we can, we can do that now, or we can wait and do it later. We can talk about legislative stuff, Planning Department, or Planning Commission stuff. Yeah, let's do that now.
So are we in new business or?
Unfinished business. So I was gonna give you all a quick update on WASAC. Wait for Commissioner Anderson to come back. Anybody need a recess break, comfort break for a couple of minutes? Or is it just me? Yeah, it must just be me. Comfort break? Or it's just me? That it's just me?
Oh, and they filled it out. They really filled it out.
These are posted on your shared drive as well. Just figured it'd be easier.
Okay, are you giving a legislative update?
Uh, you can go ahead and do this if you want.
Oh, I had that under new business.
Oh, true. Got it. Unfinished business. So the three main items that we discussed up at legislating to set official WASAC policy. One of them is House Bill eleven eighty-one, which you don't need to take notes on this. Improving the state's response to climate change by updating the state's planning framework. This is mainly for GMA counties, doesn't really pertain to us. But it was in, the vote that took place was a resounding no. Not in support of the legislature getting involved in local planning and starting to mandate local counties enact climate change regulations in their county. So that was the vote that took place. The next one was solid waste. Senate Bill fifty-one fifty-four and House Bill eleven thirty-one to improve Washington's solid waste management outcomes. For Washington Recycling and Packaging Act, which essentially is supposed to be no cost to counties. But they want to regulate producers to make their stuff out of recycled stuff and have recycling programs. And, and so for us, at this county, it would have a financial negative because we would be receiving less trash in our landfill if other counties actually recycled more of their trash. So we would make less money in tipping fees. And also, the cost to produce said products would obviously go higher. So then the cost to the customer would also be higher. That vote went sixteen in favor of a neutral. Eight votes in favor of a no or against the legislation. They're remaining neutral on this one with the ability or the hope to ability to negotiate some change. They, they didn't think this one's gonna pass regardless. And then. So I did not vote on the GMA County one. I abstained from that one because it went out of GMA County. And I didn't want to throw my weight into the equation, and it would have shifted the vote because that vote between a no and a neutral was half a vote. So if I would have voted on that, it would have swung it the other way. So I did abstain from that vote. The solid waste vote, I voted for a neutral. The third one was House Bill twelve sixteen concerning clean energy siding. This is something that the stakeholders group, including Mr. McClure, has at least worked on partially. I did not get a vote on this one because while I seconded the motion, the vote took place after I had to leave to go up to the Senate for a meeting. So I was not in the room, but it, it actually passed unanimously in favor of promoting or a yes on the legislation with some concerns. In other words, it's, it's a step better than FSAC or three steps better than FSAC. So I think the consensus from the people in the know up there are it's, it's way better than FSAC. The community actually has to have some engagement, or the, the corporation has to have some community engagement, some community buyoffs and community partnerships. They don't just get a step into your county and you don't hear from them for a year and a half. And then all of a sudden, the permit drops. That's, that's not how this works. Although that's kind of how it works for us today. Anyway, those, yeah, I got a little political on that. Those are the three pieces of legislation that we covered with a vote. I did go meet with Senator King on another WASAC issue, which I probably don't have that one in front of me. Has to do with federal grants. So we receive federal grants for transportation in this county for our roads. This county, if I remember right, it's about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars we receive in federal grants. And then we have for this one portion. And then we have to do the grant reporting and whatnot. So WASAC is trying to get those federal grants. Let's say, in short, given to the state. The state can use all the money on their pet project, their bridge, their whatever, and then they pay us what we would have got from the feds over here on the side, so we don't have to do all the grant reporting. And you don't have to have, and so this is a pilot program for the twenty smallest counties. To get our money without having to jump through all the grant reporting hoops of the feds. State can just allocate us eight hundred and twenty thousand. We pay them ten percent for grant administration. The SOASAC thing that was approved at the WASAC's conference last year, this Salmon Habitat and whatever the third one was in our fall conference that we went through the county leaders. So this was a promotion of that one, so it was just an explanation of the process to Curtis King, which went well, because to me, it's, it can be good because part of these federal grants, we can't use it on a project. Let's say Bickleton Highway, eight hundred thousand dollar project. We can't use state money, federal money, doesn't qualify. We're using county resources. If we didn't have to worry about the grant and whether it qualifies and the state used that money and just allocated eight hundred thousand to us, we can use it for that project or another project. It allows us more avenue to use the same amount of money. Yes, we have to give up ten percent of the money, which there was a talk to Mr., with Mr. King about potentially. Is that really needed? Would the state be willing to do it for nothing, since odds are they're taking all twenty of these and putting it on one bridge? So is it really that much work for them? So he's gonna look into not charging us a ten percent fee. But anyway, that's, that was what that conversation. During that conversation, we talked about the Vision Point, the Underpass, Lyle Sandbar. The bridge, I thanked him for all his work on the bridge. He did ask if there was any anything he needs to know from us. Is there any asks? Is there any requests? Because he hasn't heard any, and if there is, he wants to know. So think about that one in the next week or so, and if you can come up with a project or something that we might want to put in a formal request for. We might, may or may not see it, but it doesn't hurt to ask. That's, in short, my legislative update, unless you want to go over any of these separate bills.
No, I think we, we talked a little bit about the, the one bill. And I think there's, yeah, absolutely, some concerns changes to that bill. I think we need to look at that, especially if we're gonna be in support of it. I think we need to make sure.
We, as a county, wouldn't be, unless this board votes as a county to be in favor.
Right.
WASAC itself voted in favor. So again, for the most part, when I go up to WASAC, I'm not speaking for Clickatack County. Unless this board decides it wants to be in favor of a certain, any legislation, and then if we are, I need to know about it. Because I always preference that I'm speaking on behalf of myself.
Right.
Unless you tell me otherwise.
Uh, I guess, are there any bills that you, you think the county should take a stand on that you'd like to, right now? I know it's real early right now, and we might want to see how the mush gets made.
And that's, that's me. I mean, there's, there's plenty of, you sit in the WASAC room and it's divided. I mean, you have left and you have right, and there's a middle. And occasionally, there's some crossing of the lines, or there's some blurring. You'll get some Democrats voting against the solid waste plan and the recycling plan because they know what it's gonna cost their county. So there's some muddling of the waters, but it's fairly political. But unfortunately, I'm a firm believer in you cannot change the legislature or what they're going to do. All you can do is try to add a sentence, delete a sentence, change a word. And if they think you are neutral with the ability to be on board, they're more likely to change that word or that sentence. If you come out adamantly for or adamantly against, they have no reason to work with you. You're, I mean, we see that every day at one o'clock. Adamantly for or adamantly against, and you gotta be that neutral that's trying to sway them. So at this point, I'm, I want to recommend that we stay fairly neutral because it's also so early in the game, the bills that are proposed are not the bills that it's gonna end, and then what do you do? Change your vote later? So I would say we stay neutral unless, you know, there's a specific bill that's really concerning. And then I'm, I'm open to discussion. No comments?
I'm good.
No.
I think it's prudent to wait a while.
No, so my plan is to give you the legislative updates. Friday, when I get them, I'm gonna try to send it over to Lee so she can send it to you on Friday, and you have time to look at them. That way, if you guys want to testify on a bill that's coming up for the week on the hot list, you can testify on that, or if you want to discuss it on the Tuesday, that you want to testify on the Thursday, and you wanted permission to speak for the county, you can ask that question here on the Tuesday. That way, you're prepared for the bills. Friday, that didn't come in until five oh five. So I wasn't gonna email it over to her and have her do that. I waited until today. I showed it to you yesterday. Anyway, that's all I have. Unfinished business for anyone else. You're gonna do the planning stuff under new business, right?
Yep.
All right, we don't have any other unfinished business. I guess we'll move on with consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda with all eleven items.
I second.
Here we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with eleven items. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor approving the consent agenda with eleven items, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Pay the bills, please, or the pay estimates. Let's start with that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents in payroll benefits and warrants in zero dollars, date ending twenty-three, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
I will second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, eighty-nine dollars and one cent for the date ending January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
I will second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to pay the bills for January twenty-fourth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to pay pay estimate number three final to all seasons heating and air conditioning in the amount of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and two cents, which contains retainage in the amount of one thousand, seventy dollars and fifty cents for a total net amount of twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents, which also includes one thousand, six hundred and five dollars and seventy-five cents in sales tax for the Pioneer Center HVAC replacement twenty twenty-one KC nine dash three dash C two zero 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 six and C two one zero zero five.
And I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to pay pay estimate number three to all seasons heating and air conditioning, and I do miss reading those. So all those in favor of paying pay estimate number three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
All right, next up, we, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to pay pay estimate number two final to all seasons heating and air conditioning in the amount of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-six cents, which contains retainage in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and two dollars and forty-six cents for a total net amount of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-six cents, which also includes one thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and sixty-eight cents in sales tax for the Pioneer Center HVAC replacement twenty twenty-two. That is KC nine dash three dash C two zero 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 six.
And I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and boy, I really miss reading those. All those in favor of paying pass them in number two to all season heating and air conditioning, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. New business, Commissioner Anderson, go ahead.
Sure. Would, Lee, would you mind starting the video? We have a video at Goldendale. I'm not sure if everybody has seen, but this got forwarded to me, and I thought it would be really good for us all to see. You might have to share.
The one that. Yeah, this was really well done. Yeah, this was really well done. It was done by Clickitack Valley Health, which I saw a couple of weeks ago. Was very impressed. So thank you for sharing, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, I was really expecting to see the good. What?
I wasn't. When I first saw it posted and watched the first, I don't know, fifteen seconds of it, I kind of assumed it was. Yep.
Connect that to our job postings. Please move here and work.
Surrounded by beautiful acres of wheat and glass. Such an honorary person.
Yes, you are.
Alright, moving on, next on your list, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, um, we've had a planning commission vacancy for District One for quite some time. And getting names has been difficult. Uh, we now have three applications before us, and I was looking for the board, if the board would like to interview any. Right now, my, my, uh, preference is Mr. Langren, who's lived in the county his entire life and worked in the county. But again, I don't want to speak for the board, and so I would be happy if you would like to do interviews.
I will, uh, go off of your recommendation. Just like in the past, you've went off of mine, knowing that if there's an issue, it's kind of your guy. And you're gonna need to correct them if there's an issue, just like I'm gonna need to correct mine. Surely, so I'm, I'm fine with your recommendation.
And I like, uh, Mr. Langren having construction. I think that's important for the planning commission, that we dedicate people that can look at applications and offer something to each one of those in different fields. And I think we have, we have a fairly diverse board, but, uh, his background helps.
With that, um, I would make a motion to approve, uh, Mr. Zach Langren to the, uh, open vacant position number one on the Clickitack County Planning Commission.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Langren to the District One position on the planning commission. All those in favor, sorry, any other future discussion? I bypassed that, sorry. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Langren to the planning commission, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Now we should have a full board for the training.
Uh, yes and no. So it is still my intention to, and I haven't, I guess I'm bypassing it. I'm trying to stall, I guess. I don't know, hoping that it gets better. But we have the one position that I have on the planning commission that needs attention. But, um, if I do make that change, the change will be, uh, adding Mr. Childs, who is currently sitting on the Board of Adjustments, so he will also be in that training anyway.
Okay.
But that would open up something on the Board of Adjustments, and they would need a training there, so we need to continue to look at potential for an online trading course so that we can, um, send people through. But yes, I'm, I'm hoping to have this situation cleaned up by the end of the week.
Okay. Quite ominous.
It's not something I'm looking forward to, but we have a policy. The policy has an attendance policy. You need to be able to do your homework. You need to be able to come to the meetings knowledgeable and well-prepared that you can have, knowing what happened last week and studying your studying materials, because I think it does a disservice to the other board members and to the constituents in the county, um, to not have adequate representation, so. I'll leave it at that. Any other new business see fun stuff?
Not on new business.
Any other board pending or any other fun stuff in that regard?
One thing that I wanted to, uh, add to our to-do list or board pending, we've got, we still have the agreement and MOU between the cities and the county for the district court costs that we need to finalize, which at the same time, now we have the nine-one-one dispatch cost share for an MOU, an agreement that, you know, we just, we just authorized today the second one, so it's one year. But what I've found is, is that, uh, based on the district court cost, uh, it might take us a whole year to get to the agreement stage, when it has to go through their counsel and legal counsel and everything. And then we also have the juvenile and adult probation cost shares that have not even been discussed too. And I think all of those, it'd be nice to deal with all of them kind of at the same time. And before they get into the, you know, building their budget for twenty-twenty-four.
Did, um, when you were having your discussions with them last year about cost share for the courts, did you advise them or tell them that we would be public, potentially or possibly be coming back asking for new cost shares? For things that we've never asked for cost shares for.
Well, we have, I mean, the nine-one-one dispatch is not there, but I definitely brought up the juvenile probation issue that, you know, we've been providing juvenile probation services forever, and we've never gotten paid anything on that.
I guess, I guess that's kind of the question. Um, we'll go to staff, but you have to get in front of a microphone.
Just to confirm, Mr. Anderson had asked me to put together some data in regards to adult and juvenile probation, and it was a part of those shared documents, so they did get that information.
But they did not want to discuss that as part of that agreement.
Right. So I guess that's, that's new development. Thanks, staff. By the way, for everybody online, that was Jen Bartley, our finance, uh, person, who always, sorry, I had to mention it. They always say they don't know who's talking. We need to tell them who's talking, so I'm just trying to know pies. For our new commissioner, these share contracts that we're having with the cities to go over the courts and whatnot. The previous board deemed that the courts, uh, were not getting their ac- adequate share pitched in by the cities, so they went out and renegotiated with the cities to get the cities to pitch in more, which the cities are still not hit their share, but it, it's closer. The same kind of idea, there's a cost share for nine-one-one that is currently getting worked on. But this one for probation, and what else is there that would be a new development?
Well, the dispatch cost share renegotiation.
Right, but that one's already, they're already under that one.
Right.
So it's not a surprise, we're renegotiating an existing cost share. Probation is new.
Currently, we don't have any agreements in place for the probation side, so liability-wise. And then we also don't have an agreement in place with the district court related costs. And so both of those need the actual written-up agreement and everything.
So that would be the question. Uh, when we were having these discussions, they were under the previous Board of Commissioners. And it's a new Board of Commissioners, so I want to make sure Ms. Laurie is, is, uh, filled in on what's going on and, and get her input on whether, um, she believes we should be pursuing or continuing to pursue the new cost shares, or what her opinion is, or whether she needs more education on the matter, because she's a equitable partner on this board.
On the juvenile side, that discussion, um, cost share, who you're asking for the cost share from, not the cities on that one.
There would, all these agreements are between the county and the cities.
How does that apply to the cities for juvenile services through the courts?
So we have the Superior Court and the district courts. And so through the district courts, we provide district court services for the cities, so they don't have to go and have their own city court. And then whatever that decision that, you know, this, the, the district court makes for juveniles, that it's a juvenile from the city, we pretty much treat them all as if they're juveniles from the county, and we don't ask for any of the cost reimbursement from that. And we look at our costs, and at the rate our costs have been going up, and we're just trying to find a way so that everybody's paying equally or equitably, as close as we can as possible.
Right, so there's two, our train of thoughts there. So let's picture, let's take Goldendale, just because we're here, and we watched this lovely video about how great Goldendale is. Let's say there's a kid in Goldendale that steals a handful of candy bars from Holcom's and, and gets busted and goes to court in district court. The city of Goldendale pays a share of district court so that they can prosecute. It's their prosecutor who's, who's dealing with that case and prosecutes the kid. The kid's found guilty. The judge says you get thirty days of probation and litter pickup or whatever. Go report to probation. The city stops paying the minute the kid walks out of the courtroom. It goes over to the probation. Now we're paying the whole fair. So now you have two arguments of, well, yeah, but the city resident is already paying through their county property tax for that service, and if we're charging the city, now we're double dipping, uh, to an extent. And the other argument is, the city should be happy to pay it because we're offering the service. If we didn't, the city would have, have to have its own probation department to handle its own city kids. So that's the, long story short, on the situation.
So one other question, the city of.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you. Mr. Cannell, go ahead.
I just want to correct some information. The, the juveniles did not go through district court. There's certain categories of sixteen, seventeen-year-olds that go to, uh, district court for crimes that require some sort of licensing, i.e. any driving offense, traffic offenses, fish and wildlife. Otherwise, all juveniles go through Superior Court Juvenile Division, and all charging decisions for juveniles are done by the state prosecutor. So all juveniles are prosecuted on behalf of the state of Washington, not the cities or the county.
Okay, interesting. Good enough.
Okay.
If that helps you at all. So the question is, does this board want to continue looking into going to the cities to get them to provide at least something in a cost share, uh, for probation services when it never really has before? Or not?
But that would only apply for driving and fish and wildlife offenses, though?
No, that, that's, the juveniles of sixteen, seventeen can end up in district court. There's, there's only one or two of those a year. So the district court is for all misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors that, uh, are done within the city limits of Goldendale, Benjen, and White Salmon.
Okay.
For adults.
For adults, but not, that wouldn't then, in your mind, would that, this, what we're talking about for charges for that apply to the?
Well, the probation department has nothing to do with juveniles, so just to correct that, uh, there, there are no juveniles in, in the probation. So the, the probation, the cities do not have probation departments. The, the county has been providing for free, uh, pre-trial and post-conviction, uh, supervision services with no identification agreements and no payment.
And who does that supervision come from?
Juvenile probation.
Juvenile probation, okay.
Juvenile supervision.
Okay.
Might need to re-change that, that job title.
Okay, I think that chain is clear with me now.
So I guess, I guess, you know, the, the main cost, I think, is the adult probation. And that does go through the district court.
Right. So I'm assuming it's your recommendation to, uh, go back to the negotiating table with the cities on cost shares for probation. Are you trying to lump that together with dispatch, or are you gonna let dispatch do their own cost share with the cities? And just add inflation?
I think they're all different discussions. And, you know, the, the dispatch cost share, you know, was a five-year contract at three percent, but we hadn't had, uh, increased the costs over the three percent, even though our costs went up, you know, upwards of probably thirty percent.
Right, which is why we gave them the guidance to do a one-year contract, because I think we need to adjust that.
And so I, I see three different, really, conversations that they all need to take into account for their budgeting process.
Yeah. Okay, did you catch all that?
Yes, and can we figure out what those costs would be?
So it's all on the smart sheet shared drive?
That tells me.
Walk through, walk in there and tap her on the shoulder and say, show me.
Okay.
Do we have a recommendation? I, I would recommend we continue. I, I think you did a great job on the other contract negotiations, so. I think it's, well, it's hard to ask the cities to come up with money that they may or may not have. It allows us to keep our budget, uh, afloat by passing on costs, uh, and adjusting costs for, for CPI and whatnot, so. Opinion?
We should recap associated costs. And providing a service certainly has to be less than them going out and trying to create their own courts and figure out their own whole systems. If we can provide that service and they can afford to give us back some of those fees, that certainly helps our budgets and keeps the program going.
Okay, looks like you have consensus, sir.
Okay. The only other thing, um, that comes to my mind to, to schedule in the future would be, I'd like to talk to our, our new assessor, um, on how they're going to think about assessing the large-scale energy projects, and whether they'll continue to want to use just the depreciating, um, cost analysis, or maybe adding in a market, uh, rate analysis adjustment factor like they do on all homes, as it is, you know, for real property. And at least just pick her brain about the direction and whether we want to do anything at the legislative level, level with the assessor.
I mean, feel free to go pick her brain. I don't want to call her in here and put her on the spot about it. Legislatively, I think the battle was fought and won last year, and it was also, for some of us, fought and lost. The green energy companies. Um, the green energy companies, uh, did a very good job collecting, um, legislators and senators on their side last year to write and codify, the taxing approach that they're currently using, so I don't see a change anytime soon. Um, I did mention that to a couple of senators when I was up there last week. Uh, and because of the depreciation and the cost shift to the people, that they're gonna have to fix it eventually. And they can either fix it now before there's a problem, or they can wait till there's a problem, that they're gonna have to actually pay some money to help fund their way out of the mistake. Um, and to at least those two, they understood that. But at this point in the legislative process, they don't think they're gonna get their seatmates to listen, uh, until there is a fire. Um, so, I mean, if we want to try to draft some kind of legislation that our, our legislators push, I'm fine with that. I just don't think you're gonna catch a lot of traction on changing, um, the current taxation approach recommended by the state. That's just an opinion. Don't like your opinion, but oh, I do, um, think it would behoove us. Again, it might be too late for this year unless they can slap it in another piece of legislation. Um, I would like permission from my seatmates to speak to Mr. McClure and have him draft a two-paragraph, half-page explanation statement that I can distribute in Olympia to explain our ask to, on green energy projects, the state makes green energy projects sales tax exempt. Uh, we would like to change the wording to make them state, say, sales tax exempt, and leave county and local governments their sales tax rate. Um, it's just, I think he would be better drafting up the wordage of that than I would be. Are you aware of what I'm talking about? Okay, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I will ask you about that one. Anything else?
That was what I had on my board pending.
Yes, I'll take a quick look at mine. I don't think there's anything. I've been too busy to write anything in my board pending list. All righty, anything else for the good of the order? Um, from any electeds or department staff or, oh, heart of the board, go ahead.
I believe that economic development is going to bring forth another ask from Goldendale, quite Sam and Grange, to add more community dollars.
All right.
If you have a dollar amount of board who'd like to consider, you'll have to do a supplemental to add funding to community dollars. There's already five thousand. They're gonna ask for another four to five.
We're gonna talk about that tonight, in case of PETA.
Yeah, that's one of the asks on the case, case PETA board tonight.
Yeah. I don't want to get in front of them tonight.
Uh, entertaining. Um, anything else? I would, um, I would like, before we adjourn for the day, um, I would like to go into executive for all of five minutes, um, to give you guys an update on where we are, on contract negotiations. Uh, if, if you're interested, it would also help me, we have a meeting on Wednesday with council. Uh, and I kind of need to know where your graces' minds are on the game.
You.
Before I go to council on Wednesday, or do you want me to just handle it and bring you back a recommendation?
Fine hearing what you have to say in music.
So, quick executive, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just let everybody know that we won't be coming back.
Yep. So, it looks like we will be, uh, entering into executive session in accordance with RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one-one-zero. Pran one, pran D, to review negotiations on the performance of publicly bid contracts when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased costs. Uh, we will not be taking any actions, and when we come back in our five minutes, uh, we will recess to adjourn, and when we do adjourn, um, we will be adjourning until Thursday, the twenty-sixth, at twelve-thirty PM. Actually, it's earlier than that. What time are we starting our workshop? It's on Thursday now.
I believe it's eleven-thirty, but it will be an executive session with, um, interviews.
Okay, okay. Um, for our scheduled workshop on Thursday, and then we'll be making a note that the, uh, Clickitack County Public Economic Development Authority Board Meeting is tonight at six PM, uh, downstairs, and all the commissioners will be present. Uh, so with that, we'll be enter- entering into executive session for five minutes. Thank you, everybody.